There we go.
Yeah, welcome. Everybody to Kennesaw County Public Hospital District Number One Border Commissioners. This is a budget hearing. Actually, if we could do a roll, like to welcome everybody. Thanks for being patient with me and being on Zoom all the way in the COVID free zone of Oklahoma.
Did you already say?
Yeah, date is October 28th, 2021, 5:00 PM. We're starting with our budget hearing.
You want to roll?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Okay, Bob Davis.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Yeah.
Erica Livenow.
Yeah.
Don Ward.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Dr. O'Brien.
Yeah.
Andy Olson.
Here.
Michelle Worrell.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Scott Lander.
Here.
Carrie Barr.
Here.
Amanda Scott.
Here.
Tricia Sinek.
Here.
And we have online, looks like Jeff Yamada.
Here.
Jason Adler.
Here.
Ron Erlecker.
Here.
Wynden Navarre. She's muted, but she's on there. And then we have Dr. Martin, Rhonda Holden, and Vicky Metro that are out tonight.
Thanks so much. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Thanks for those that are attending on Zoom. Yeah, let's start with the review of the budget of 2021. So Scott, do you want to handle that?
Yes, yes, please. This, this is a budget that we're required to submit so that we are able to receive some levy money in, in 2022. And our, with the budget that we've submitted, we're, at this point right now, we're estimating net operating revenue of $110 million, net, or operating expenses of $105 million, net income of about $5 million, and then other operating income of about $309,000 for a total net income of about three, five, $5,309,000. And the ordinance that we have by approving this, but if, if the board approves this budget and the ordinance, we will be able to increase the levy funds that we receive by $95.8.
For the entire levy.
Yes.
Or 1%, right?
1%. That's.
That's the max.
That's the max.
Okay, any discussion? Can we have approval of resolution? 21-04 adoption of the 2022 budget?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Erica, second by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Do we have to do the property tax separate or is that?
We do, yeah. So approval of resolution 2105 of authorization of 2022 regular property tax levy. Any discussion? Can we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Erica, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed?
Thank you.
Any other questions on budget?
So you send the master around for us to sign at the conclusion of the meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Thank you all.
Yeah. If there's no other comment, we'll adjourn, adjourn the budget meeting. And move into calling the regular meeting of the Kennesaw County Public Hospital District Number One Board of Commissioners regular meeting dated October 28th, 2021 at 5:05 PM. First item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any items to add or move from the agenda?
Bob, I'm just gonna add to the education board reports. I'll give a brief update on the regional triage teamwork that Dr. Martin and I have been doing.
That'd be great. Yep.
So under education report reports.
Okay, anything else? Okay, can we have a motion to accept the approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
And I second it.
Motion by John, second by Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And then we have the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda? If none, we'll ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by, motion by Terry, second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed?
I think we've commented on this before, but we should maybe say something again about the $347,000 plus dollars being contributed by the foundation. That's the largest to date. And so thank you. I know the whole board very thankful for the work done by the foundation. So I just thought I'd mention that before we move right on from that.
Yeah. I mean, it's especially powerful considering our, what we get for levy versus what the foundation does for us. But that is, that's huge. Yeah, very much appreciate the foundation. They're doing amazing, amazing work and huge help. So let's do a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to take a public comment? If so, please limit it to three minutes. We usually do not respond to public comment. Any public comment? Okay. Announcements? So Julie, do you want to announce the Washington Hospital Association?
Sorry. Yeah, today is the annual meeting of the Washington State Hospital Association. Kennesaw Valley Healthcare and Kennesaw County Incident Command were recognized as, what's the exact title? The press release is on your. There you go. It has the Community Health Leadership Award is what we are, one of the recipients of the Community Health Leadership Award.
Yeah.
Basically, what it says here for its community engagement and collaboration with community partners to serve the broader populations. Samaritan Healthcare was also recognized, Virginia Mason, Franciscan, and Swedish for its mobile vaccine clinic. So again, the emphasis, the focus of the award in Kennesaw County was on the partnership and really how we were able to leverage our rural assets and our partners to serve the entire county.
And since, since you asked you, Michelle, I assumed that there's some sort of press, press release for?
Yes, this actually, so this is the Washington State Hospital Association press release, and I forward that, forwarded that out to our own media this afternoon as well.
Great, thank you.
Good. And in that, is there like a, kind of explains it? Is that what you're, okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's significant. It just proves a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And a lot of collaboration. So congratulations to the hospital and staff. Okay, so we'll move on to line item five presentations. Is Linda here? By Linda Navarre. Manager of Risk and Peer Review.
She's showing up on the screen, but we can't hear her, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry. Yes, from the compliance committee, we would like to provide you with an update on progress with the work plan for 2021. That's on page 19 of your board packet. And every year, we look to define the key elements of, of an effective compliance program as defined in the federal sentencing guidelines, and also look to see if there's any new federal or state healthcare regulations that need additional focus. Work to ensure that we're meeting those, meeting those guidelines as well as any other high-risk areas identified within our own internal risk assessment. So the standards you can see on, under objectives on number one is policy and procedures. There was a focus this year with the new regulation. That was the 21st Century Act Information Blocking. This was put into effect this year and required quite a bit of policy and procedure development and updating and revising some privacy release of information policy as well as training that is prepared for staff. This is, would have a significant impact if, if we were actually fined with, through the Civil Act of not, of blocking and individuals' access to their health records. It's like up to a million dollars per violation. So this is definitely something that we want to ensure that we have the processes in place and, and have staff trained to that. Cindy Kelly, as a privacy officer, has taken lead on that and has progressed well with having those in place. Number two is having a compliance office and a compliance committee. So we continue to meet to have our update to, to the board as well as an annual report out. We had to push back our update a little bit this year, so it wasn't completed by the third quarter. But we are ensuring that, that we're following up and, and reporting out to you at least twice a year. Also, we identified with a small work group with commissioners. And so we could identify a dashboard that we could have as, as kind of evidence of tracking of compliance investigations and, and follow-up. So I will kind of review that at the end of this work plan presentation. This will be quarterly reporting on that. And this is the number of compliance reports per 100 employees, which was, we looked at a national, a couple of national benchmarks, which was 1.4 reports per 100 employees. Then down to number three is having effective training and education. So this is ongoing training through Biz Library. Our focus is on the code of conduct, just because that does have a kind of a comprehensive summary of the standards and what's expected of, of staff and, and the organization. Right now, we're at a 42.9% completion rate for the year. A lot, a large portion of the education gets done in the fourth quarter. And I'm hoping to, hoping to achieve 100%. That would be optimal. And I will keep working towards reminding staff to get that education completed. It also does have a little quiz at the end too, to try to initiate some recall from the learning for that. Also, ongoing education for new leaders and providers as that continues. And number four, so developing effective lines of communication. So ensuring that we have a process in place to respond to any concerns for compliance, non-compliance. We do have a hotline, and we also have a specific email that comes to the compliance officer as well as an open door policy that anyone can stop by and talk to me if they have any concerns. The goal was to have investigations initiated within two business days. As, at the time that I updated this report within data, we had four, we actually have five now, investigations. All were initiated within two business days. That's, these are, are investigations that had more, I should say, time spent or required more evaluation to ensure that, that we are following policy and procedures or identifying anything that, that may need some improvement. There's, you know, every day, sometimes there can be compliance concerns that are kind of a just-in-time assessment, and those are not, not logged. For instance, sometimes patients, when they get a bill, they may feel that they're overcharged, and they'll make a verbal comment. They believe there's fraud in billing. Once we get on the phone and talk to them, we can help them understand what the charge is for and, and how the insurance is billed. And so, again, these are more formal type of, perhaps a written letter that was, that came or a more of an audit type of finding that needed more intensive follow-up.
Linda, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
This will become relevant when we get to the, the example of the dashboard. But what are you calling a compliance report? Is that is that, these calls that are, anything that's logged? What is a compliance report?
The, the compliance report is, is either a verbal report to the, to the board or that annual written report, the, the, the response and investigation follow-up on, on a complaint or a concern is part of that data criteria.
Okay, so the, so the dashboard, when you talk about compliance reports per 100 employees, what does that mean?
Okay, I see where you're coming from on that. It should be compliance concern. I see that was being described as a report. Yeah, it could be interpreted different, different ways. So I'll make sure that that possibly maybe we could change it to concern. Maybe that would make it more clear on what that actually is versus the report seems more like a formal kind of.
Okay, and then what will count as a compliance concern is just what's logged? Or will it be everything that you get, every phone call and everything?
It'll just be what's logged.
Okay. All right. I was just, just wondering. So, thank you.
So Linda, this is Julie. Is that exclusive of the privacy concerns?
It's excluding privacy concerns. Yes, those are logged separately. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
These are only related to general compliance concerns. I hand off any privacy concerns to Cindy Kelly, and she, that data is compiled and, and included in her privacy and security report. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you give us an example of like, what's, what would be your, the average kind of compliance complaint?
For example, maybe a staff member felt that, that a leader wasn't following policy related to maybe how the process for doing a, let me try to think of a good example here. Some could be related to HR and how they're following the process for a disciplinary action. Sometimes it, that would just require reviewing our current process and policy to ensure that you understand what that step process is. If they, at that time, determined that they did disagree that, that there was a violation of that, then I would initiate more of a formal compliance investigation. If I couldn't just answer the question along with, or the, or HR, or maybe the department director can answer that question for that staff member. And that they feel satisfied with that. It would just be more of a, a just-in-time response to a concern. From the patient side, a good example would be I had someone who was a VA patient, and they felt that they were being billed, that Medicare is being billed twice. That the VA was being billed, or actually insurance was being billed twice. The VA was being billed and Medicare. And so by reviewing the records and understanding what was going on, it was, for example, a, if you're a VA patient, if you're going to have blood drawn outside of the VA system, then you can bill Medicare for that draw fee. So they will see on their EUV and things like that, that there is a charge that KVH does. And that is within the Medicare and within the VA guidelines. And I had a document too, that I was able to share with the patient as well, so they clearly did that. And they were satisfied with, with that, that verbal report and a copy of the, the regulation.
Thank you.
I could, yeah, I could track, track all these, even just with a just a high-level indicator, if that would be helpful, just to, to know just how many of those kind of just-in-time type of interactions are going on, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, we, so John and I had met with you, there was a, two dashboards we were gonna track. One was, wasn't the number of complaints and how we benchmarked that? And I'm trying.
Initially, yeah. Yeah, initially, you looked at two. The other was, was the, the concern validated. And we decided after I didn't familiarize her too, that if that was displayed, it may, staff may feel that if they reported concern and it shows not all of them were validated, it may, may impede reporting, like they're just not going to think it's any big deal anyway. So why should I even report? So, so after, when we, our last meeting, we just decided just to go with the one at first, to start with. The number of reports and have it reported out per quarter. One of the things I was also going to talk to the Royal Collaborative on our Royal Compliance Committee is, is the potential for some benchmarking within that, within facilities. And there may be a measure that the team considers that may either add to our dashboard or you potentially may want to switch it out for that measure. So he has something more kind of within the state to compare to.
Great, thank you.
Other questions on that? Okay. All right, so we are looking at that, the, that I report out also to the directors meeting monthly. If, if there's any investigation that there is something that need to be shared with all those leaders, so they can be aware of what to be watching for or ensuring that, that, that we are following our, our policy and procedures or regulations. Those are reported out on the employees on number five, enforcing standards with well-publicized disciplinary guidelines. So this is where it was important to ensure that when staff are oriented initially and also any through Biz Library education, even on annual basis, is that they're reminded, this is for the policies where, are on the internet. This is how you can tell something's been updated. And, you know, especially being aware that there is a non-retaliation policy. There's codes of conduct policies out. There's a lot of guidance on there that they can access at any time through that, through that internet. And that's something that Amanda and her team has, has put into place to ensure that everyone gets reminded of that. Auditing and monitoring, so having a third-party internal medical coding practice of the new ENM guidelines. And this is a key factor to be able to, one, ensure that we're following appropriate coding guidelines, and also to get feedback to the providers. And that was something that was completed by August, and the report out was done to the provider. And so they can be aware of how well we actually did. Did very well. And that's something that Scott may have reported out to you or, or Cindy Kelly as well. I can get more information on that if you're interested in any data. Here to risk analysis, this is with Jeff Mott and his team. So again, it's just ongoing work to ensure that we're meeting the highest priority findings and mitigating that to the greatest extent possible. We, the 2021 Security Risk Assessment is going to be scheduled for November, and with a different vendor. Recommended that you change vendors out every few years, just to, you have a, a good external review from an outside source to kind of help you identify those areas of, of weakness and to show you where you're doing, doing well. And so again, that's just an ongoing thing. And Jeff reports out monthly on the, the latest things that they're finding and those mitigation measures. Also, 340B audits, this is an ongoing auditing to ensure we're meeting the requirements. 340B is an excellent program to support, you know, the pharmacy staffing and, and, but does require some pretty intensive auditing to ensure that we're not following through with any, ensuring that we are identifying discrepancies and reversing claims as needed. So that's master and his team do that, and they report out monthly for that. Also, Amanda, the last one is related to privacy HIPAA and privacy guidelines. Ensuring that we're reporting to AHF as required. And so your totals of, of the privacy breaches that meet that criteria are reported by March of that following year. Or if you have a breach, a significant breach, and especially if it affects more than 500 patients, and there's a number of different types of criteria that you would have to notify AHF right away. So we did not have any of those immediate reporting breaches, but we did have some low-level breaches that we did report in a great manner. And that was completed by March of 2020 for that 220 data. Any questions on that?
Right.
On the, on the dashboard, more questions?
Okay, all right. So, yeah. Okay, yes, page 23 is an example of the dashboard. So looking for feedback on that.
Yeah, I just had one question about it. You, you put that handy-dandy little arrow on there that's good for us to know what's better and what's worse. We appreciate that. But I'm wondering, if, if you had zero, that would be bad because stuff may be happening that you're not aware of. But if you had like 100, that would also be bad. Because that would be a lot of bad stuff. So is there like, is .35 there, the national benchmark? Is that the sweet spot there? Is that the idea?
That's where it was determined with some of these national surveys that they determined based off of the, the number of employees in the organization, what, what could be expected, showing that you have a healthy culture where they feel safe to speak up? And I, I kind of feel it's more like our incident reporting. You know, if we had more people reporting when they had a concern, and even if it was, you know, the concern wasn't valid, you know, it was maybe just a misunderstanding. It would just have people more engaged. It just, it shouldn't be something where people are just lashing out. You know, you want to have good reporting where people are, have a sincere concern and, and bringing it forward. And so it seems like, right now, we haven't, you know, we had one report last year that was kind of an ongoing concern and, and really identified where, where someone just had to, needed a better understanding of what the regulations were. And it, it took more time, but eventually we got through it. So it's, it's rare that, that we can't, that you get any kind of a report that's not well thought out. And so it feels like, you know, with, with the number And so it feels like, you know, with, with the number that we have, you know, we, we're at five right now, so definitely over, um, what would be considered a standard target. They were good concerns to be reported, and, um, and we have a lot of, you know, again, it feels like people are coming forward, even just with a phone call or an email, just saying, hey, I just, is this okay? So maybe by having, um, some more reporting on those just in time would give you a better idea of how much, um, is being communicated from, from staff or leaders more on a consistent basis versus just a, a solid number of five, which seems, could seem low.
That makes sense, but yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think it was, I mean, I'm not sure it would be entirely a good sign if the phone one at the compliance office was ringing off the hook all the time. Uh, so I get it, we want all the compliance issues to be reported and corrected, but we don't want there to be a lot of compliance issues, so that's-
No, you don't want to, yeah, you don't want to see a big spike, you're going to think, you know, what's, and especially if it's focused in one, one area, you'd be like, you know, something is not working well here, where people are feeling really uncomfortable. So, um, I think it's going to be an evolving type of, of reporting, and we can certainly, you know, change it as we go along, and just try to, um, because we could also have another indicator on there during that time period regarding that the type of reports possibly just in time versus a full investigation process, so I'm certainly wel- welcome any ideas on that, kind of a new thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
And Linda, this is John, let me make a couple of comments here. Matt, to your point, too low is concerning, because it may mean there's friction points in how people communicate their concerns. So one thing we've been looking at is a, a third-party hotline that we're already a member of, and we look to announce that publicly in the near future, once we confirm the number's not going to change right after we publish it, so we're looking at that. And Linda, I'm, I'm confused, because on page 19, we've got 1.4 reports per 100 employees, and then our dash line on the report on page 23 shows a little less than four, three and a half or something. So I don't, I'd like to figure out why that's not consistent, and is that per 100 employees per year or per quarter?
Per year.
Okay, I thought it was a higher number than that, but I'll look into my notes on that when I get home.
Yeah.
But, but what's the discrepancy between the 1.4 and the dash line at below .4, do you know?
Is this our real data, or is this like an example of what data would look like?
This is, this was our real data, that Amy pulled from here. So .4 was, you know, indicated that, yeah, I, I understand what you're talking about, because within a quarter, I think she was figuring that, you know, you wanted to make sure that we're at least at, at the .35 for that. It may be better to have a total number and percent of meeting target.
Yeah, I think we'll want to look at that, and I don't know, I don't know, Bob, if you have any recollection of what the target was that we had in our discussions? I thought it was closer to four per 100 per year.
It was, we said on four, when Amy did the figure, it was trying to make it more precise to the actual percent, but, um, yeah, when we were meeting together, we just decided on a solid four.
Well, and we, we don't have to, to continue with this in this meeting, we could do that in, in our next gathering, just to continue to refine this and make sure it's providing useful information for everybody.
You bet, and it wouldn't be published until the November dashboard, because it would definitely validate all the way through, um, through September data. So, um, yeah, let's, um, all have a schedule of meetings, so we can talk about that more, and then I can engage Amy and more on making it, um, having a graph that's very clear, and that's easy to, to determine what, what the target is and, and what the rate should be on that, the target rate.
So, uh, Linda just-
But yes, regarding the-
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, you can go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I was, um, to, when John was describing the hotline, yes, we did a trial with Compliance Line, that was the, through the Washington Collaborative, they had a contract that any hospital for no fee could sign up with this, this service, and it was trialed, um, and we were concerned, because there was a discussion that maybe the collaborative was going to move away from that company and look at another, so we didn't, it was concerning the thing that we would have a hotline number out there that would be changing and confusing to staff. And so, uh, the last, um, that I heard from the last Rural Collaborative Compliance Committee meeting is they're looking at an organization called Lighthouse, which a few of the rural hospitals are using, and then comparing that to Compliance Line, and there should be a decision by the end of the year on that. And, um, so at least we did the initial work to having things set up with the appropriate routing, um, of information coming through, and, um, also the, the testing of the customer service, because I do know that, um, that by calling and listening to how, how the the customer service reps respond is, could make a difference on how comfortable people feel to continue with the call. Do you agree with that? Go on, Anna.
Yeah, yeah, yep, sure. Yep.
So this is, uh, I mean, this is, I won't belabor this too much, but you're gonna give us a separate report on how many incidents there have been of non-compliance? Is that true or false? Because it sounded like you didn't want to sort of say that, because there may be a discrepancy between the reports and that, but, I mean, if you're getting zero people calling in, it could either be because there is this friction point and they're afraid to call in, or it could be because we haven't screwed up. And so it would be nice to, to see not only the number of calls you've gotten and reports, but also how many times we've actually been shown to be non-compliant. I mean, no one's called the cops on me, but it doesn't mean that they're afraid to call the cops. Uh, it doesn't mean I've committed a crime that they haven't told them about, so, you know, this is the idea, is there, are they afraid to call? Or is it that we haven't done anything wrong? So having a separate indication of how many times we've been non-compliant might, might help.
Or they don't, people aren't familiar with, they can, they have that, you know, option to call in and make a report.
Right, it could be any number of those things, either they don't know, nothing's happening, or they're afraid to do it, I mean, uh, so just knowing the number of reports that you've had, doesn't tell me how, how, how much we've done wrong, you know, I, I kind of would like to have that, uh, that as well, but it sounds like you're gonna do that in report, in regular reporting to us, right?
Yes. Right, so like in the annual report, but we can, yeah, we can all work together with, uh, with that smaller group and, and see what we can come up with and how, having another indicator that would demonstrate whether compliance or non-compliance versus validation of that, because I think there's a difference between that, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
You know, we, we talked about a category would be called in, but determined not to be a compliance issue, so we'll get all the math to work out, yeah, when we get this finalized.
Sounds good.
So, so, this is Terry, I just wanted to try to clarify something, because I like what Matt was saying, what John was saying about this. So if we had a compliance issue, and we had 12 people call you about that compliance issue, we would know the number of people that called about the compliance issue, because I think that would be interesting to know that there was an issue, or there was 12 people called about it, or there was an issue, only one person called about it, that would kind of give us a view of how people are looking at the compliance in the organization. So that would be also reported?
Yes. Yes, we can also have that in the, included in that. Yeah, this is really good feedback, I appreciate that, so.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Bob, can I jump in here for just a second?
You bet.
Linda, right now is our compliance officer, she also handles risk for the organization, so in addition to the work that you see here, anytime there's a concern or a claim, Linda's the one that pursues that and follows that with our insurance company. In the 2022 operating budget, you will see me asking to separate those two positions into two full-time positions. I think right now, Linda, we are checking all the boxes, but every single one of these topics deserves a full-time person to look at it. When I think about, um, patient billing issues and charity care in an enterprise way approach to how we do these outside audits and things, so this is something Mandy and Linda and I have been talking about this year, separating those two positions, um, our contracts and compliance, what's, you know, just all those questions that one person doesn't have a chance to do, when she's also writing letters, trespassing people from the property and pursuing claims with the attorneys and things. So expect to see a, a full 1.0 compliance position that will be new to the organization in the 2022 budget, and that physician will more likely than not report directly to me.
So Linda, I think in the public board meeting, the CEO just said, you're underpaid.
But you're not underpaid, I appreciate that.
No, no, yeah, it's been, well, it takes the whole team to do it, it certainly even just, like Julie said, it's feeling like just checking the boxes, and we, we want to do more, um, and, and I think it's important to do that, so I appreciate the, the support to get in that direction and-
Thank you, Linda.
And Linda, our peer review, staff peer review.
Yep, Dr. Brian and I, we came up on peer review. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other presentations? That's next month. Julie, do we have anything else for presentations?
This is it.
All right, so we'll move on to quality with Mandy as chief quality officer.
So you should have my report in your packet, and I do have a couple of things I want to add on. First, just to talk about Cloppy, so we did present the draft Cloppy plans, and I, those were sent to you as well, and thank you, Terry, I got some feedback already from you, so please review them, the processes that, uh, we will take feedback over the next month, and then at the December QI Council, we'll present the final drafts, um, as well as recommendations for new QI dashboard to QI Council, and then, um, if they feel that it should be, it will be brought to the board meeting in December for Matt and Terry to recommend for approval by the board, um, for the 2022 year, yeah.
Can you say brought in December, is that November's meeting in December or December's meeting in January?
December's meeting in January.
Okay.
Yeah. And, um, yeah, so that's the process we followed the last few years. We did use a slightly different method for leaders, and I think it's gone really well so far, um, that allows our leaders and admin team and directors to comment, and so really excited to use that new tool with Smartsheet. So, um, any questions about Cloppy?
Just to be clear, that, uh, if you have comments or suggestions, because this has to go back to the, to the department leaders and things to get their approval, and, you know, so it's a whole process, so rather than having suggestions that are summer meeting, that's in January, we'd like to get those suggestions prior to the QI Council meeting, so we can incorporate those before then. So if you have a chance to give feedback, please do so. Uh, what, what was the deadline that you gave us on that, do you remember?
You know, I don't know if I gave you deadlines, but, um, it, it's pretty easy to incorporate that, so, um, QI Council is the second week of December, so by the end of November would be great, at the latest.
So if you guys wouldn't mind in the next months, please take a look and get any feedback, that way you can go back to the leaders and get their thoughts, and we can have it nice and tight at the QI Council. Thank you.
Um, and then I will talk, I'll, I'll give you some updates on the hospital surveys as we go through the dashboard. Then, um, from Point Health, I do want to give you an update on where we are with flu vaccinations, so our policy is that our staff need to have their, um, either a declination or documentation of, or, you know, they received the flu vaccine by November 1st. And so at this point, as of today, 85%, so 550 staff are complete, they've provided documentation one way or another. Some of those staff, 72% are vaccinated and 13% have declined. We still have 95 people out there that need to get their documentation in, so we'll see, um, I, already the vaccinated number has gone up since, um, since we've been contacting departments, so I'll give you an update next month. Any questions about flu? Okay, and then, um, I also just want to, this isn't in the border court, but, um, we did at QI Council, it was, um, the last meeting, Judy Love couldn't make it, but she, that would have been her last QI Council meeting, she's relocating, I don't know if you saw the nice, um, advertisement in the paper that Julie and Michelle put in there, but, she's been with us for more than three years, and just really, I think, been a model patient family advisor. So I, I'm, we'll be sending you an email requesting nominations for more patient family advisors, we could always use more on our patient family advisory council, and we do need to replace Judy, whether that's from our current panel of patient family advisors, we are, uh, we are losing another patient family advisor, um, too, so, uh, I'll be asking you for, for names.
Is that, is that departure of public information yet?
I don't know.
Okay.
I think so, but I don't know, but they're not said.
Well, I'll just echo that, A, Michelle, thanks for getting the ad on social media and in the paper, and Judy Love was just such a tremendous contributor, not just to KGH, but throughout the community, so she will, she will definitely be missed. She was somebody we know we could always reach out to, she always had time and energy to give to our special projects and our committee, so she will definitely be missed.
Then, um, so if we go to the dashboard, there are a couple of things I want to highlight. First, um, see sepsis, we did have two out of three failures there. One of the reasons I want to point this out is, um, uh, there was a shortage of reagent to do the lactic acid test this fall, and we did, we do have it now, but, um, that is one of the tests that they do to identify sepsis, but it's certainly not the only way that sepsis is identified. So we weren't able to do the test in some cases, uh, which is part of the bundle, the measure, so we would fail the measure, but that doesn't mean we, we obviously identified sepsis, because this patient is included in data, so we are still able to identify, but we weren't able to meet the measure, because we couldn't perform that specific test. So, um, that should be resolved in the coming months, and then, um, the other one, one of them also didn't have a blood culture drawn, and so that is one of the Cloppies in the lab, is about blood cultures and blood culture contamination, so, um, this, the, another one, uh, too, that I'd like to talk about are restraints and the pain reassessment after medication. Both of these are measures that we look at, they're part of our plan of correction with CMS and Department of Health. So first, restraints, it doesn't look a whole lot better yet, uh, but there's a ton of work that's been done, um, they've been doing daily chart audits, real time, so they can correct documentation that moment, the nurse is still there, um, and can document if, and, typically that is a lot of where we find this, it's just the care was provided, it wasn't in the chart at the time it was done, so it's just documenting, um, and getting that reminder to staff. There's also been lots of education, including, um, just this Tuesday, they did safe patient handling education, and I heard we had a really great turnout for that. So, and then with pain medication reassessment, you can see there is a little uptick, um, on MedSurge and CCU, that's where, again, Jeff's doing those, um, daily audits and reviewing with staff, and they're- And they're, they're documenting then real time, making that correction to their documentation. We're still struggling somewhat with. FBP and the emergency department, they've, they do have a little bit. Different window of especially the ED, like someone might get a receipt of medication and then discharged before their. You know, it's been 30 minutes to reassess that. They are also getting weekly reports to the department directors. And so lots of education there that's happened as well. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then on the second page, the point reports, you can see those really went up. And, you know, talking about clients reports, you know, our incident report, we do, we always think, you know, more is better. But we do have that rate below on the reports of occurrences where this is where there was harm or increased monitoring that the patient needed. So we always love it when we see that number of reports go up, but the rate of additional monitoring or harm does not go up, right? That means people are really being proactive and thinking about it. In this particular month, the lab and imaging department has been working on an improvement project where they're. Counting the number of times that a patient arrives and doesn't have an order. And so they're using their safe board as a way to help track and kind of count these instances so they can. Can visualize that problem. So that's where that's particular site came from.
So, I mean, what, like, how much more is that? I mean, that's a big jump.
When I talked to Brandy, who's getting, receiving all the individual reports, she said it was, it's mostly contributed to the lab and imaging. So about 50.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if you can say anything else about this because you did mention it, but I thought when you were talking about this QI council, about this real time improvements with regard to restraints. I would, I thought that was really interesting. Could you just say another word or two about that?
Well, the idea is that, right, like. There's such frequent documentation that's needed for restraint. Sometimes it's every 15 minutes. Of course, it'd be easy to miss it. So with Jeff being able to look at it right then, within, you know, 24 hours of something happening. The nurse can then probably recall what they did and document that. If you're looking at reports. Weeks or months out, well, obviously that's not, you wouldn't want to go back and document that, but because you probably can't remember well either. So I think that's making a huge difference. And that's one of the things that he's also doing with pain reassessment and they're seeing how they can do that in. Family birthing place or ED. The other part of that is how do you. Spread that beyond one person, right? So that it gets done consistently and it doesn't depend on Jeff being there and doing it. And so that's one of the things I'll keep working on is how do we make this reliable system checking?
Thank you.
And I think that's all I have.
So on the workplace violent events, I see it kind of went up in August. Are a lot of those COVID related, I know earlier in the year, we had a jump of those and there were COVID related. About people being cranky about certain things about the COVID, whether the vaccinations or. They couldn't come into the organization without wearing a mask, a patient or something like that. Were they still kind of COVID related?
You know, I, I think there was one in August and I think maybe one in May. I don't, I don't know with our numbers. That may have been enough to cause both of those little peaks, but. That's, I don't think there was more than one.
There's, I, I mean, I know. I'm, and this is anecdotal. The emergency department with the long mental health polls that they're having down there and the increase. Just relative to total volume, number of behavioral health folks we have down there. We've had some, some, what I would consider high risk events that were in the emergency department. And again, it's anecdotal. When you read these and, and three people will report through the bird system from their own perspective. It seems to be an escalation of true violent events that are occurring in the emergency department in particular. But there's a tremendous amount of anxiety up there. We've had, Carrie had folks in the clinic that felt very threatened. But people are just, people are on edge and quick to anger. And yes, they don't want to wear a mask and. But I'm, there's some disturbing stuff going on in the emergency department and it is very nice to have our security personnel there. And we continue to have great response and a great relationship with the Owensburg Police Department as well. So.
So in workplace violence events, you're asking about like duplicate reporting for compliance, right? For workplace violence, this is events. It is not number of reports. So if three people reported an event, it's, it's only counted as one in this data.
Okay, thank you.
We do have all that, part of the security team is to review each of these events and we do have data that shows, you know, how many times it was reported. If it was physical or verbal, if there was a weapon involved, if there was harm to the employee. So we have more detailed data that we review at security and safety committee.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that hasn't related to our security guard notes, we actually moved the security guard. They were sitting in the ER waiting area and they moved to the front, if not lobby area. And that has actually a lot of the concern that the registrars and people at the front, working at the front desk were experiencing. That is, that is really the escalator of a lot of some of that activity that, and I don't know if it's made it over into.
Well, I think some of those weren't being reported to what you're saying, Scott. I think there were more instances of people coming in and being rude, disrespectful, angry, maybe about mask wearing. To the front desk staff that probably didn't make its way into your report. That I, I do think that's really helped with the move of the security guard.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So CEO report, Julie.
Yeah, I would be happy to take any questions, but I've also asked Tricia and Amanda. To flesh out some of the issues that I've already reported. And Tricia, if you can move up front, so we're not all craning our necks here. Tricia has been working with the childcare task force at the Kiddecas County Health Network. And specifically, you can read in my report, the KDH wants to be part of the solution for the entire community. But Tricia's quickly becoming our childcare expert here at KDH. So we just take a minute to.
I never thought I would be. So we're a member of KDHN and we have been since it started. And one of the issues that was identified in the 2018 community needs assessment was this childcare deficit in the community. And so KDH became part of a subcommittee working on childcare access. And just for those of you who aren't aware, Kiddecas County is a childcare desert. And that is defined as a place where there are more than three children for every available slot in the community for childcare. So it's a huge issue in this community. And we're part of the commitment to trying to find solutions for this. 83% of parents with a child under five report finding an affordable quality place for their child to be in childcare. And 60% of rural communities across the United States are childcare deserts. We only have three centers in the city of Ellensburg that take infants, for example, into childcare. And one example of this constraint is that currently Happy Feet, which is a big provider of childcare in this community, has only eight slots for infants. They have a waiting list with 47 infants on the waiting list.
Probably.
So those children will not be infants by the time they make it to the top of that waiting list. And so we're, as an organization, invested in helping expand resources and childcare access in this community. We're a big organization, a huge employer. And this is, this benefits us too. We have expanded access for our employees. And a recruitment and retention issue for KDH. So. One other factor as we dug down into this access issue in the community is that. There are very few properties or areas of the city and the county that are zoned for childcare. There's special zoning designations and there's very, very limited. Places for new childcare facilities to be built or for current facilities to be remodeled. Or, or the use of a current facility to be changed to childcare. So one exciting thing that recently happened is that we met with the county development department. And they have agreed to champion this issue going forward. And what that means is they will take the lead with our input in expanding the zoning capabilities in the county and all the urban growth. Areas. So this wouldn't just impact Ellensburg, it would also impact Quillam and Thorpe and other areas for the future. That won't happen until 2023, but that's a very exciting development. And it's not something that will cost the work group any money and they will champion that on their behalf. And make a recommendation for the county commissioners that those zoning changes occur. So we're working with the childcare expert and she identified that. A great opportunity would be to expand access within a new facility that has about 70 openings. That's considered the sweet spot in terms of being able to manage that and being able to make that a cost effective venture. And that would have classes for all ages. It would require about a 5,000 square foot facility. And about 5,200 square feet of outdoor play space. And only licensed providers can offer these services. And of course, there's major fire codes and life safety codes associated with childcare facility. So what are our opportunities as part of an organization that wants to contribute or help develop access for childcare? We have an upcoming early learning facility grant opportunity through the Department of Commerce. That grant is due December 1st. And so Julie has graciously and Scott have graciously allowed that if a local childcare provider who's currently licensed and is eligible to apply for that grant. Chooses to do so, that Mitchell will support that grant writing process and I will help them in any way that I can. And if that is unsuccessful, we'll apply through the legislative funding process and our local representatives. We'll also look into ARCA funds with the city of Ellensburg and we'll continue to work with the county to expand zoning for childcare.
So this is a two-pronged approach here, but again, as part of KCHN, this is KDH's. Attempt to, to help the entire community solve this childcare shortage. Because we have a very selfish desire to make those spots available to our own employees. But we see it as being, being able to invest in a community-wide venture. We'll do our patients, we'll assist our patients and then just really kind of put some oxygen into the childcare. Services here in Kiddecas County. So we're not going this alone. There's childcare providers, the school districts involved with this. They have, as Tricia alluded to, they have some outside experts. And I have Amanda sitting over here going, get this thing built so we can create a benefit for our employees to move into those spots. So getting it off the ground so that we can make it available to our employees. Because we know that that's not something that just our employees are concerned about. We hear from the providers. You need to help the employees do this so that they aren't calling off all the time when their childcare provider isn't available. Or when mom's kid's sick or something like that. So as part of the finance committee, you'll hear a request. That in this Alf grant, the million dollar grant that a private licensed provider has to apply for. They need a 25% match. So I am asking, we've done some contracting with this provider. And Scott will be teaming this up during finance, but we're asking to commit 250,000 KDH dollars in order to secure this benefit as part of the grant application. So just heads up. But Tricia and Mitchell are helping with this committee. I think it's fair to say that the committee was kind of thriving until these two got in and turned all the lights on and got everybody moving. So.
Thank you.
So Julie, quick question. How, how much of the Radio Hill annex are we using? Is there any availabilities, large enough availability there to do anything?
So I think space wise, there is, we are going to collide very quickly on parking and outdoor space. So the exterior space would, would probably suffice, but there is no way we can meet the parking requirements or the outdoor play space.
Yes, and there's no zoning for that in that area. I looked at every single facility that we own, anywhere close to what we own. And the second issue there is you have to do a traffic study, which will be pretty expensive. And I'm sure that the amount of traffic coming in and out of that residential area would be a barrier as well to changing the zoning.
Yeah, believe me, Tricia and Mitchell have stocked every piece of property in town at this point. I, I wanted to buy a church, but they couldn't find a church that would.
Does it seem like the lack of zoning is driving the deficit in childcare or just the dirt of childcare hasn't driven changes in zoning? Probably a little bit of both. And you know, you're talking about quite a good chunk of money now. To remodel an existing facility or to build a facility and most childcare providers will really struggle with that. And that's why this, these grant opportunities are so important.
We did reach out to some of the corporate providers, the Bright Horizons and, and folks like that to see if they were interested in partnering in Kiddecas County. And we're not quite big enough for them. We don't have, they need two or three large employers who would contract with them to come into town. So I think having a truly organic Ellensburg, Kiddecas County solution to this is, is the most successful route. I also wanted Amanda to talk a little bit about where we're at with the PEB. And then also a brief reminder for Amanda on where we're at with the Teamsters. We are three months away from, two months away from the end of our three-year contract with the Teamsters. So we're going to be starting negotiations.
Yeah, so with the PEB, you'll see in my report, I kind of mentioned that in September, we got some surprising news from Primera. They quoted us a 78% increase in our medical plan rate. So that was shocking to us, but also our consultants. Parker Smith and Feek, and they've been fantastic advocates for us. So since then, we've been scrambling. Scott's been a great partner. Jason's been a great partner with HR. And we've been working with those consultants to do not only a market analysis to see if there are any other plans that we could, that we could kind of, that would work for KDH. Or if we do need to look at going to the PEB again. And at that time, we did make an application to go to the PEB. Because there was a 90-day application process and we, and so we made the application while we looked at other options available. We continued our conversations with Primera. We were all in shock. We requested some additional data that they didn't really meet our needs. And, you know, in our negotiating, the best that we were able to negotiate them would be a 55% increase. And so that would still be quite shocking amount for KDH and our employees. So we did decide to move forward with the PEB. That is something that KDH is familiar with. We've been in before. I think Julie has stated well that we've, we've gone where it's best for KDH employees and we have included in that. So our employees are used to going with a change of benefits meeting to do that. It was about a 4.8% increase in rates overall with the PEB and we just got that contract. Jason got that back in sign today. So we're going to be. With that, I partnered with our unions and, and our benefits advisory committee and they were, they were supportive of us moving in that direction as well. Some of our members that are also our nurses for WSNA said that, they, they just complimented the PEB and their experience on that. We had some feedback around our Primera dental plan as well. So this would resolve some of those, those issues that we have had. We would be moving forward with Washington Dental again as a, as a dental provider and some of our primary dental offices that we partner with. But for our employees and that our employees attend, do use Washington Dental and some have actually discontinued using Primera. So that we are looking really good with our process with the PEB. So there's just lots of to-dos now. We're kind of scrambling unfortunately with open enrollment. We weren't expecting to be changing providers so drastically with minimum notice, but. But we are close to being able to next week announce open enrollment dates, which I believe we can start in November 12th. We have to build all the rates now. We got the contract and everything, but that will be coming soon. It'll just be a little bit of a shorter period for our staff. And we'll do the same options with education and open sessions and electronic process. So maybe luckily we've done that the past few years. So people are used to that. But we feel good about that, but there was really no great option financially. We were going to take a hit either way with either Primera or the PEB. With the PEB, one of our concerns and Scott reviewed and looked into this as well, is the liabilities. And that was the reason why we didn't leave the PEB the first time. We had a great offer from Primera and at that time. And so it will be about a six to eight million dollar liability. I don't know if we've got a final amount with that last contract Jason may know, but it depends on what other hospitals are joined in the PEB at that time and they'll give us a final rate of that. So it is a significant amount. Over three years, the Primera contract would have cost us calculated thirteen million dollars. So what what is going to be a significant amount either way. But we do believe that if we can plan to be with the PEB for several years that, you know, those liabilities, hopefully we can we can expense out over time. So that's that's the plan. And so we're getting ready for open enrollments and opening that up and but again, no concerns from our labor unions. It's just a matter of education on what those planned benefits are at this time.
I'm expecting open enrollment.
November twelfth is our goal, but we just got the contract today. So then we'll have to kind of, it usually takes about a week or all the raids, get all the materials together. And so we're going to be announcing kind of those dates.
You anticipate the twelfth is the start or the end?
The twelfth, the twelfth. So probably the twelfth through the end of November. Yeah, so it'll be a little shorter. We'll we'll definitely, we can open it up sooner. We'll we'll do that. Now that we have the contract today.
And and just for the record, the six to eight million dollar bookkeeping liability, my understanding is not something we actually will ever pay out. We just have to keep it on the books as long as we're with the PEB. Is that?
That is correct.
Versus Primera, the thirteen million is gone forever.
Real cost, yeah.
Yeah, it will. It will hit the first year that we're in. And if we ever leave the PEB, it will reverse and come back out.
It's designed to annoy me.
And that six point eight is actually an estimate. At this point, we will have Milliman will actually do actual study analysis based on our employees.
Are we fairly confident it'll fall somewhere in that range or it could still slip out of that range?
It could. It could. It could slip out of that range. For the better or the worse.
And you did some work to make sure this doesn't input our ability for investing.
Correct. It it does not. I ran this by Jeff Fiveco, who's with Piper Sandler and who's our central counsel for issuing debt if we choose to. And this will lenders understand this and this can be explained. And so it 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 makes you, you know, look a little ugly in the first year, but it is an explainable non cash entry. Lenders fundamentally are concerned about your cash on hand and your ability to pay that. And if there's a non cash adjustment, that can be explained.
And do we believe the the high deductible plan will then become the most cost effective for people?
Yeah, the high deductible plan will then be the core plan. So we had a change of that last time from the history that I am aware of, where which was different than the typical. It was the core plan was the low deductible and that's not the usual. And that was actually an error with Primera that we were able to enjoy at the time, but we have communicated with our benefits advisory committee and with the unions that the core plan will will be the high deductible plan.
So can I just, the the reason that definition of which is the core plan is so important is our contribution to the employee's premium is based on which plan we define as core. So when we say we'll pay a hundred percent of that employee premium for the core plan, the high deductible plan may be six hundred dollars a month, whereas the low deductible plan is seven hundred and fifty. So that's why it's really important that we define which is the core plan.
Are are people going to be upset with this change or do you think that we okay with it?
To the PEB?
The core switching to the high deductible.
They're going to be unhappy about that.
Unhappy about it?
We were pretty honest. We had an employee forum and we were pretty honest about some of those changes and I haven't heard anything. I think people were probably more surprised on the other end that the core plan was.
We've reminded them over and over and over again that this is completely backwards. The high deductible should be the core plan. Don't get used to it. We've said that over and over and over over the last years, but you know, it's nice. So I I think they'll be unhappy. I don't think they'll be angry with us and it won't be a surprise.
Do we expect the employee experience with the PEB this time around to be fairly similar to the last time around?
I I think so. It sounds like they've made some improvements, especially with the processing end as well. And they have some new like wellness programs and things. So I have seen some, I was I wasn't here when it was before, but Marlo is and she's continuing to manage our benefits and she's kind of done a deep dive with the materials and we don't really have concerns necessarily on the employee experience at this time.
Will the organizations still offer a discount for services rendered here by the organization?
Yeah, we are really reviewing that. Our benefits consultants don't have within our plan structure, a way that we can do that in a way that I guess is is compliant as far as like direct discounts and things that are worked into the plan. However, we we do want to be able to to look at that and make sure that we continue to drive our employees to to KDH and support our network. And so we are looking at some creative ways do that.
And the state contributes either seven hundred or fourteen hundred to the high deductible plan through the PEB, is that?
Through the HSA? Yes.
If we're calling the core plan a high deductible HSA plan.
Yeah.
That's state by it's not hospital.
Part of the premium. It's yeah, it's built into the PEB premium, right?
But it goes into the employee's HSA.
Yes.
And they have a few different options with the PEB and you know, there are some, you know, plans that, for example, are only accessible to Yakima County. And so we're going to be, I talked to Julie today, we're going to be looking at, just working with the PEB on which of those plans are we making sure the employees have the right education when they're selecting their plans that they're the most useful for them.
So we're not quite sure whether someone who works is there's a uniform medical plan that's not available in Kiddepass County but is available in Yakima County. Is that attached to the employee? Is that availability attached to the employee or the employer? So with Kaiser and with this uniform medical special, we're going to get in touch with the PEB and figure that.
We do have a few remote employees and quite a few that come from Wenatchee and Yakima, which is like, so.
It makes sense to have insurance that they can use for their.
Right, right. Yeah, and just it's kind of aligned well in terms of our Teamsters contract. And I really actually, looking at my report, I should have emphasized more about just the positive relations we've had with our labor unions during this time. It's been really incredible. So we are gearing up for Teamsters negotiations. We're excited about that. We think we have a lot to offer at the table in terms of our market analysis for wages and things like that that we'd like to do, especially with the minimum wage increase. But we know that they have proposals they're going to exchange with us. So we're starting our first meeting actually just in a couple of weeks, November tenth, just to get an idea of what the things pursue. They may take our benefits changes into account within their negotiations, which of course they're able to do, but it's been a really positive experience. WSNA as well. We have negotiated in terms of our critical staffing needs, several MOUs that have allowed some incentivizing some employees to take on extra shifts when they do need to fill those critical shifts. And we've defined that really well, but so on a temporary basis during this critical staffing time, we've really worked well with our with our labor unions who draft suppliers that meet those needs. We recently did one with home health and hospice as well, since as you can see in Rhonda's report, they're really struggling. They were hit really hard with the mandate and other other things. So now we're trying to meet those needs. And even with the accommodation process, I mean, our WSNA rep, she was on the phone calling people that weren't engaging with us necessarily, but that she wanted to make sure employees knew their rights and and what image was trying to offer. And she actually complimented us and said that we should be the poster child for the accommodation process because we have been, we really did try to support employees with that process. It's been, we we are very thankful for our union partnerships during this time.
Julie, you said something about the uniform medical plan wasn't available here in this county. And the Kaiser one is, but there are plans on the PEB that are available.
Yes, yes. So it's just one of the plans designed by Uniform Medical that's only available in Yakima County or not available yet.
Yeah, so there's one that's only available in Yakima County and other select counties, but not in Kiddepass. And then there's a Kaiser one that wouldn't be available in Kiddepass County as well. But there's three other plans that employees would have to choose from.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's.
You said there wasn't a plant available or we're hooking up with something that doesn't have insurance.
Is there a uniform available in Kiddepass, just not the uniform that's available in Yakima? So it's two different versions of it?
Yeah, there's several versions. We just want to make sure that we're not overwhelming employees with too many choices, especially ones that wouldn't be able to use.
So if the plan that we got available in Kiddepass County, does it cover the employee throughout the state if they go to other places?
It depends on the network.
Right.
So typically, when you talk about uniform, I think they access our regions. Contract, which is going to be a very broad contract.
Okay, I was just thinking, it's like if you have somebody here, they had to finally get transferred over to Harvard View, I would hope that that they would be also in the network.
So would I.
I think all emergency care is covered statewide.
Oh, is it? I believe so, yeah.
But insurance companies are increasingly narrowing their networks. So but we are mindful of that when we transfer patients also.
Yeah, and again, Julie or Scott, I mean, the the PEB makes us acknowledge a seven million dollar as far as the books, but we're not paying them seven million dollars.
Correct.
That's correct.
It's just annoying from a bookkeeping standpoint.
Yeah.
More than annoying.
More than annoying. This is a family meeting.
It's called it's called Gatsby seventy five and you can feel free to curse it.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for all your work. I know it's crazy time for you to get all this stuff ready for the employees. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Yeah.
That's it.
Anything else?
Anybody have questions for me?
No, thank you. Thank you. So we'll go to operations with Chief Nursing Officer Vicki.
So Vicki is not here today, so I'm just going to add a little bit that first of all, she calls out a couple of times the support that our SOP nurses were able to give both in the emergency department and back on Med Search CCU. And I think that was, and you saw an ad that Michelle ran really thanking our nurses for that flexibility and their willingness to step up and do that. It can be really nerve wracking to do a different kind of nursing, a different kind of service, but they were it was phenomenal teamwork. Monday of this week, we began scheduling surgeries again, so we're not at full steam yet. Some of that has to do with our need to have those SOP folks deployed elsewhere, but also Amy Krogstad is very shorthanded right now. A little bit has to do with the mandates, but she had some untimely resignations and people leaving to follow spouses and things like that. So so Amy's working hard to rebuild her staff so that we can be at two, if not three rooms going forward. But Carrie, how's the rescheduling going?
Rescheduling is going really well. Definitely had a backlog for our outpatient procedures and that was just outpatient. Except today, we just got news from Amy that inpatient is is back on as well. So that's exciting. And we started in the clinics, we started that work on October eleventh just because of all the prior authorizations and things that you have to do to prepare to get them back onto the schedule. So that work started in the clinics early on. We've been in contact with Vicki and Amy Krogstad hand in hand.
So it's a it's a little, we have a backlog and it's a little slow to get get going, but word is we're back open for the surgeries.
Correct.
Because I have had a couple of people ask me about that. They just haven't looked into it because they that's good to hear.
Although Amy says it's slower, I've looked at the boards, Wednesday and Thursday, and it's not slower. It's
Pretty, pretty.
It was the same Monday, the same Tuesday, the same Wednesday that they normally have. So I don't know. I don't know where she's coming up with slower, but it's.
Amy's wearing scrubs a lot these days. Um, the other thing I would just call out, we talk a lot about the volumes in the emergency department. I know they did have to surge over into SOP. I think it was Friday of last week, so lengths of stay have been longer in the emergency department, the behavioral health patients that we had. And then our EMS service over the course of the last month, six weeks, has just been very, very stressed. Shortages of, you know, folks having to travel much farther. So longer turnaround time. At any given time, we will have five ambulances in Kiddepass County. And up in medic two, up in hospital list two, we measure what we call zero hour time. And I think that was at twenty three percent when both units were out and committed. So you're waiting until one of those gets released and hoping you don't get a call in the meantime.
So twenty three percent of the time?
Twenty three percent of the time at two units, the two medic one units out and engaged.
Over what period of time did you mention that?
Oh, wow. So it's it's just a very stressed system right now and it's contributing to to some of the workload restriction in the emergency department. So all that to say, I'm being Vicki here. I don't think the numbers, the visits in the emergency department is really telling the story. What's going on? You want me to go on and be Rhonda now?
Yeah, would you please?
I totally.
Thanks, Vicki. Thanks, Rhonda.
Control of my senior leadership team this. As Rhonda actually is on assignment up in Upper County, we asked her to attend a meeting about a big development up there this evening. So she's up there being the hospital district two strategic liaison. So her absence is at my request. So home health and hospice, as you heard and read, was hit pretty hard with the vaccine mandate. They had a, and then they had some other folks that had scheduled retirements and were leaving. But there is some really good news on the horizon and April Grant, who has been the chief nursing officer in clinics, what was her time? Yeah, sorry, he's whispering. I'm sorry.
It's going to be great.
April is going to be great. So her clinic, it's director of. Director. She has taken the job of director of home health services. So if you don't know, April, April is an absolute nurse's nurse. She's been kind of in an administrative role, but her heart is never very far from patient care. She is just a this person. And when I heard she was applying for the job, I spent this much time feeling sorry for Carrie Bar because I was really excited about the opportunity for for April to really grow and take that role.
But what is the position title again?
Director of Home Health and Hospice. So we'll be working on that transition in November. Rhonda also has hired occupational therapists through Rehab Visions to will be getting started at the end of November. Very promising RN candidates for home health and hospice and they're interviewing an MSW candidate. They have two applicants for the home health age position. And Amy Burt's last day is twelve three, so she's a PT. So they have a request for some traveling PTs. As Amanda mentioned earlier, WSNA and KDH have reached an agreement for some incentive nursing shifts in home health as well. Referrals are up and they're very, very busy. And I got tested today. I do not have COVID. My knee had cold.
You know, we're all giving you the sign.
I know. I was I was getting some relief and I stayed home. Anyway. Any questions for Julie being Rhonda?
Thanks, Rhonda.
Yes, thank you. And let's move on to Carrie Barr, Chief of Clinic Operations.
Good evening. So you can see my report is is fairly large this this month. And I just really wanted to highlight particularly around our specialty expansion. This has been something that we've been tripping away on for five years now, it feels like, just to get physicians credentialed up there and to have a whole specialty side. As you remember, we've been working with Sweet. It was like fifty first dates every time we'd meet with them, you know, was just, this is what we need up here. We couldn't necessarily get past the the drawing board with them. So this is really exciting. So I just really wanted to highlight Dr. Petty starts tomorrow up there at General Surgery. So and he he's just starting with half days. And he already has a full schedule on his half day and they're all Upper County. Actually, one person coming from Seattle area, so. And he already has a full schedule on his half day, and they're all Upper County. Actually, one person coming from Seattle area, so we're just really excited to be able to to offer that service in Upper County, so. And I will take any questions. Lots to chat about.
Can you touch base on AIMS?
Yes, so AIMS is the, AIMS is that program, and it's that behavioral integrative behavioral health program that we have that is ran through University of Washington. We have that up and running in Clealum and had for the last couple of years. Great program. We have hired a social worker who also works with our patients in conjunction with Orin O'Connell. And this is the same program that we are going to be implementing in Ellensburg. So it'll mirror the same program that we have in Clealum. And Orin will still maintain in his role. This just in from the CFO, we have received our $160,000 payment to support this, so this is part of being part of that cohort. They had asked us that we were actually the golden children of the first cohort. They had asked us to be part of the second cohort. It was right in the middle of COVID. We said, gosh, this is just not a really good time for us, and and so we were pretty confident we were going to get picked this time, and sure that it just having Orin particularly at the helm, where he's had a fellowship for the AIMS program and through University of Washington. He just really is a champion for this integrated behavioral health.
Awesome. That's an exciting program.
Yes, and we are, we are stealing from the hospital. So we're, everybody's in the stealing mode right now, so. We are, we're stealing Polly Sam's, and in both cases, in the April Grant case, going over to Home Health and Polly Sam's, who is our social worker here in the hospital, moving over to this role in the clinics. We were very considerate when we steal, so we're making sure that we're, we're doing a hybrid training model for folks and that we're we're really gracious with their time in terms of having maybe a foot in each bone of clinics or departments.
Nice. Any other questions for Carrie?
I wanted to call out Carrie's MA Apprentice program that she's been doing for the last few years, which I, when we were talking through budget. Earlier in the week, she shared that she's retained 77% of all the MAs that we've put through that program. So that was one where we used to steal heavily from the whole medical community, trading back and forth, and now we've we've grown a lot of our own, and we're keeping them.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
We will move on to medical staff with Dr. O'Brien, Chief of Staff.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a big list, except for one rogue outlier, that O'Brien is kind of causing some chaos here. I have printed the list that you have in front of you, so I know exactly what you're looking at. I'll just quickly run through. There's seven initial appointments for provisional, one year provisional, four active, and two allied health professional. Four of them are RPG hospitalists and a new CHCW provider that will be doing OB here. Necessarily want to make their own names, but then there's Ryan BT, who's gonna join, working with us. Dr. Haney's, while we expected, PA, we work in the ED. And Michelle Smeback, who's been working with Dr. Zammatt as a vascular provider, and will be assisting him greatly in his work here. And there's that O'Brien, he's listed it just for active, natural fact in the MEC, we discussed it. And he lacking the required 50 patient contacts within the hospital in the previous time period. So our precedent there is to make them a provisional, one year provisional active reappointment to see if they can increase their in-hospital activities enough to qualify for active. They expect that, so in other words, you'll be approving a provisional active reappointment for O'Brien for one year. Anticipate at the end of that year, I will probably be requesting ambulatory. Then there's Dr. Gustafson Neurology, who is never been board certified, and we do have a general policy about board certification, but with occasional exceptions being made under certain circumstances. And for Dr. Gustafson, he is a well-liked, well-experienced, highly experienced elderly physician.
Sue Manda heard.
Anyway, was actually first appointed a year ago, and now he's up for it. And we strongly feel he's well qualified to be granted the exception of not being board certified. Interestingly, though, he does keep up his CME to a very high level, as does O'Brien. Who's also not board certified at this point. And that's what we feel, we feel that. And also even payers, we institute this same general attitude is, if you're not board certified, you have to do a robust CME education program, which both Gustafson and I do, by the way. Just, if there are any questions about that, we could entertain those. But just to finish the list, David Jackson up for reappointment. KBHIM, and there's a, or Yakima, urologist up for reappointment as associate members. They have not done any inpatient work here, but we're hopeful one day to be able to provide that for them. And then there's the insight pathologist, and then two ONRAT radiology, tele-radiology providers requesting reappointments. And Chris Adal, nurse practitioner, family medicine elder, and all these others. O'Brien and Gustafson have no issues to question.
Thanks for that, Dr. O'Brien. Yeah, we had a good conversation in MEC about board eligible, board certified, all that kind of thing. And so, yeah, we have I mean, one of the docs on here is board eligible, but just because they just got out of med school, they're gonna be taking it soon, so that's not really an issue. But, you know, whether docs have to be board certified, whether it's enough to be board eligible, whether they have to be board eligible in the relevant area that they're practicing in. Whether CMEs are good enough and stuff like that. I mean, I think that, as far as I'm concerned, anyway, as a board member, I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I think I would be comfortable if we just had some sort of policy from from the MEC, but also the employer, like what the expectation, if the expectation is I just board eligibility, then that's fine. So I think as long as you guys are working on some kind of standard, so it's not just an exception here and exception there, whereas there's a clear standard, I think that I would be comfortable with that. Yeah. And, yeah, go ahead, Bob, sorry.
Yeah, what what does, in the MEC bylaws, what does it say as far as, does it say board eligible, board certified, or does it say, I mean, the
Yeah.
This has come up, this has come up several times over the last six years.
Yes, it has. Yes. It says about board eligible, board certified, and previously, board eligible is something you achieved once you finished a qual, a a certified residency in that specialty, then you were basically board eligible for life. That is no longer true for some boards now. Some boards, for instance, in neurology, they require going back to further residency training in order to be board eligible to take the boards. You know, in other words, it's a complex, difficult process. And here's the thing, those guys that reach 60s and 70s anticipate not working long enough to make that extra expense and work worthwhile. And
And I, to Matt's point, certainly, as the employer of a lot of the medical staff, I will engage the board in the standard that they want to assess for employed providers. So, which is a totally different question than the question that will come before the medical staff. So we have that that lever that we can use as the employer. If the board says, you know, we want our providers to be board certified, we can do that. So we can spell that out in the contracts.
But I remember having conversation, am I right in thinking that board eligible plus sort of successful CME education, yeah? That that would be, at least in your opinion, sufficient? Because I know that as a late person, you guys really explained this to me well, I think, at MEC. I'm not sure if the other members of the board are familiar with this, but to a late person, a lot of times board certification seems really important, but as I'm hearing from some providers, it's maybe not as important as as some people think it is. So I appreciate the idea that you're, you want to give board direction on this, but I'm not sure. I mean, I would like to sort of hear if there is a general consensus among medical staff and even among the, you know, with the employer. Because I know, for example, like there was a note, Dr. Hibbs had a note that was suggesting something else that the MEC's, you guys. So I think I'd be comfortable if the medical staff had a position that, you know, I mean, I I don't want to just make exceptions for people who are old, you know, right? How old is old, you know? I had a student the other day say 50 was elderly, but anyway, so, you know. So I, you know, I think just some clear standard that the medical staff is willing to follow, I'm happy to take direction from from you guys who are more familiar with this stuff, but.
Well, we look at it from another standpoint, too, and that is, your community, you want neurology services. Okay, now, if you have a neurologist available, it's always been highly respected and has no issues whatsoever, other than the fact that he never was board certified. Now, do you want to shut that person out of your community and deprive the community of services that you could have if you hired him, which we did? I mean, he's providing a valuable service to the community. Now, if you had your choice between two, one with board certification, one without, and, you know, you'd probably go with the board certified, because you had that choice.
So.
But in a situation like this, you don't have a choice. Do you either want to provide it or you don't?
So the board certification, isn't it also kind of a business for the company that, or for the group that board certifies you? Because you're a licensed provider, you've passed your residency, you've done everything else. And now, say, John and I wanted to put together a board certification program that we would license you with board certification, and we get to charge you $10,000 for your board certification. Is that going to actually show that you're a better provider, or whether it gives you some more initials to put after your name? So I think that's one of the things that we kind of have to look at, is if you have a good provider, they have a good history, they don't have any liability issues that consequently, the board certification is just another agency out there that gives them a little bit of a gold star possibly, but consequently, they have a gold star, they still could have liability issues even though they're board certified.
That's an interesting point. And I'd be interested to know what the evidence says about how to be board certified, board eligible, or neither. And is there an advantage? I mean, because outcomes are, I think that's what I'm concerned about, and if there's no difference in outcomes, is there a relevancy to preferential treatment or retirements?
Does it have any impact on insurance bill? Would somebody get a procedure done, but because the provider's not board certified, it gets rejected or something?
For instance, certification, which is which then expired about 2011. I was expecting to be retired.
What did you go for?
Some other, they wouldn't let me go. It's true. I had to certify group health. You know, every so often, I see any document, even then, that I'm doing, that's CME. I've been requested or probably will be requested document CME to other insurers. And most insurance companies are, they're just kind of focusing more on this issue, insurance companies, in previous day. But that's why I say, I, in the CME, we feel, well, if you're not board certified, we're certainly completely reasonable to request documentation of CME activity. Keep it up with your education.
Is there some advantage? Bob mentioned the bylaws. Is there any advantage to getting that in the bylaws?
The bylaws are something that takes the whole medical staff to read and agree upon any changes, which we do every once in a while. Last time was about seven years ago. It's great. It's a glorious project to change bylaws.
Well, we're gonna, I mean, I'm not gonna, and one of the reasons why I think we needed to do this in the session is I don't, I don't always need to discuss any of these individual positions, and certainly I'd be happy to support this credentialing list. I think just so we don't have this conversation every few years, it would be nice to get some sort of policy. Because otherwise, we're gonna be talking about it all the time.
Dr. Martin is also a member of the Washington World Collaborative Physician Leadership Group, and I have asked him to survey other world hospitals and find out what other world hospitals are doing as well.
Those ones that face that's
So like, primary care, they have to, every 10 years, they're supposed to, you know, recertify. And then it, like, I don't know who mentioned it, but, you know, they they pay for a review program, and then they pay for the test. And, you know, are they really getting much from it if they've been practicing? And a lot of practitioners towards the end, they're just like, I'm not gonna do it. You know, I've been practicing.
Yes, Carrie said, it's a business that has been expanding its footprint. And yes, it's expensive and it's time consuming.
And yet, state law requires for primary care, I think it's 25 hours per year of continued medical education. 50, 50 hours every two years, I think.
It's 25 hours of category one.
Yeah.
And another 25 hours of other CME activity.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like Dr. Martin's looking into some other, what other hospitals are doing. You guys are about in MEC, so that that's fine. I think as long as we eventually come up with some sort of policy, I think I would be more comfortable rather than just sort of making individual access.
Yeah, I will, we were working in the C about where that might best be addressed and bring it to the MEC to in a format that MEC can approve, you know, having to go to a vote of the entire medical staff.
Okay.
When this first came to my attention, I thought, well, how did I not know that initially? How did that slip my notice when he was first appointed? And so I'm fairly thorough with the packets, and then it occurred to me that the cover sheet, the top sheet with the information is not standardized, and I'm wondering if there's a reason that sometimes it'll Sometimes it'll say board certified, board eligible, or. I think none. Sometimes it doesn't list that at all.
I can answer that question in this particular case. And that is, is that the last, when he was reviewed initially. He was listed as board eligible. Which is, you know, acceptable, no problem. There's no focus. Since then. Recently, the neurology boards have removed. The label of being board eligible. After a certain length of time after training. Which is, as I said, was previously not the case.
Like here.
Previously, you were board eligible for life once you completed training.
I don't know if it varies between types of providers, whether they're.
It does vary from different boards.
So um this provider here, M D, it says verification of board status. There's a box that says yes, one that says no, one that says eligible. This one here for Allied Health initial appointment verification of board status just says yes or no. And is there anywhere to standardize this? So they all say the same thing. Um, there's, I, I think a couple other variations of how that might look.
So I will take that, we can talk about that with Shannon. I, the example of uh. Uh, mid-level and a physician, I, they don't have the same certification type.
Right.
So, but standardization is the question. And can you look at the same form and get the same information?
Right.
And we'll talk with Shannon about how to do that.
Yeah, there's another variation.
But you're, you're actually right. The forms that we use for different categories are different. So, you know, it's not like one box that tells the same thing for everything.
Yeah, Erica, that's a good point. I do, I feel like if we, if we're seeing the first three pages that are like. You know, similar. Um, where we sign off on, it would, it would help.
I think that if I don't see boxes to trigger me to look at it, my mind, it just hops over that. Whereas if there were the boxes there and maybe checked as appropriate, or maybe it's appropriate not to check any. That would trigger me to maybe ask some questions about that. Well, thank you.
You know, I, I think there's a, this is truly a financial issue for the, the boards, like a neurology board or different board to do it. Like Dr. Uh. Said that uh the neurology board will drop your board eligibility off. And are they doing that because they want to get more people to become board certified so they can earn more money? It's not, it's being done for a quality issue, it's being done for a financial issue. And uh such, not every board is doing that yet. I, so I think, you know, one of the defects in the system is that we got to be careful not to be looking at something that is actually a. Financial issue for the certification boards. Uh, that could be impacting the quality of our providers that we have consequently. Uh, cause it's just a possible labeling that they're going to get. You know, there is some nonsense that appears to be coming on this. I, I know in like in the pharmacy era, there's board certification. Uh, and there's a certain amount of parrots that are board certified. Uh, and to a certain degree, uh, that doesn't really impact the, the quality of care. But it is more initials that you have after your name. So it, it is a, it is a business that they have put together. Uh, and I'm sure there are probably something out there in the nursing industry and some of the other ones. So uh, I think from a hospital standpoint, it'd be really uh interesting to see what Dr. Martin finds out. At other rural hospitals about this. And I would like to see if we could get this defect out of our policy. So that way we don't have to have this discussion over and over and over again.
Yeah.
The thing just real quick, I don't know if Shannon reached out to the board yet, but she's going to have not regarding the new software update that she has. Everything's going to be digital. So my understanding is a lot of those papers will be going away. So that may change too with what you're looking at, how you're seeing things.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Well, having had that conversation, I uh. Moved to approve the list uh here that Dr. Brian has presented with that change right to you with the provisional act.
provisional act.
Yeah, so I moved to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second um by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for educating us on that.
It's always a fun discussion.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think as a small rural community, we're fortunate to have this skill set in this particular one we're talking about. So I make sure we're not saying anything that makes it feel like we're not excited and I'm part of the K V H family.
Yeah, exactly right.
Well, and I think that's what makes him such an excellent example to have the conversation about it, so.
Great.
Uh, who, who's covering for Dr. Martin?
Oh, I'll be Dr. Martin.
Here.
I'll be here all night.
I will.
You want me to run the?
Yeah.
Station.
Okay, why don't you run the slide?
So today's spotlight is going to be on one of our providers at Family Medicine Ellensburg. And she crosses over into dermatology as well. It's Julia Reel. And so we will.
I've always been drawn to, you know, opportunities to work with people and in particular be able to help people and connect with them. And medicine is a really special place to do that. And just I've always been interested in um, you know, medical science when I first broke my arm when I was ten. And that was so cool being in the E R. That was what really first sparked my passion. You know, I like seeing um rashes, you know, psoriasis, eczema. Love helping adolescents and people all ages of acne. And, you know, precancers, skin cancers, um full body skin checks. That's really my passion.
I want my patients to feel comfortable and um respected and heard. Um, because I feel like it's intimidating to come in as a patient and kind of have to lay out everything about yourself. Um, and so I really work hard to make it them feel comfortable.
So that's Julia. Uh, and we have just set the dates for our next filming of providers for November fifteenth and sixteenth. So we should get another uh big chunk of people done within the next few months. So it's pretty exciting.
Nice. I like those. Um, any other brief questions on Dr. Martin's review, report?
I have a question. Um, we've done the changeover at the hospitalists. We're now not quite two months into it. Any updates? How's the, you know, because there was some concern I heard from the community, these long shifts and all these things. Is it seem to be working okay?
So um I've done some poking and pro- the answer is no. I think the transition went very, very smoothly. I've kind of scratched around to see if there were things going on under the surface. There doesn't appear to be. It was changed. Some of the things that um. I think Dr. Martin and Tricia and the, and Vicki and Jeff. Are being very, very careful to hold into the standard that they promised here in the early stages of the contract. So when they said they were going to sit down with the nurses at ten o'clock and consult on all the patients. If we have a provider who's doing that at eight o'clock or not doing it at all, they're all over it. To make sure that, again, those things that we were assured were going to happen are happening. Um, we had a provider who was not a good fit. And they were moved on and will not be back. We had a provider who showed up positive for COVID. They were able to fill that slot very, very quickly. So I, I think we're trying to set a standard in the relationship early on. Um, there's no quality concerns that I'm aware of. Nobody has been. Um, I, I don't think there's been any hiccups in terms of communication. Tricia, is there any?
I think overall it's been going very well. I try to check this daily with Jeff and Vicki and with the provider. And um just today, actually. Um, the hospitalist who's new this week. Picked up something odd on an E K G in a patient and called Dr. Hoppy. And she came over and the patient was having a very serious cardiac issue. And Dr. Hoppy performed an emergent um cardioversion. And that patient is going over to the M for a permanent um infibr. So that's really exciting. He picked that up and he wasn't sure what to do with it. And she said it's not unusual that he wouldn't know what it was, but he knew enough to reach out to me.
I know, Dr. Martin, thank you, Tricia. And Tricia is the one sort of playing liaison with the, with R P G. Um, I know, Dr. Martin is pleased with the improvement in the relationship between the emergency department and specialists. And that's about standardizing and, you know, knowing what to expect and meeting those expectations. So, so, so far I would give it a good solid B plus A minus, so.
And, and they have kind of a designated rest period in the middle of the night. That, that's going okay. You know, you've worked on different strategies to make that work and it seems to be functioning.
What I'm hearing is that they feel like when they're called, it is appropriate. The calls are appropriate. So it's not like they're getting calls on every change order. Um, and that so far there have not been any complaints that they haven't been responsive. So if they're called, they come in, they think the calls are getting are appropriate.
Yes, can I give another quick comments? Um, all the R P G providers have said that our staff is fantastic to work with. And they said the nurses are great and the team is highly skilled and they're clinically very competent. So that's great feedback for us from outside providers. And I think the other thing that's really profound is this started on the seventh of September. And we just had this huge COVID bulge. And we have a core doctor that was here first, just like six people in the ICU were COVID, people in the units were COVID. And um he said it was very, very busy and it was hard to get them dressed, but it was patients that were critically ill and needed, you know, hands on. So.
Yeah, they have been stressed because of the big COVID problem.
And ideally for hospitals of our size, that's a anomaly because of a COVID surge or whatever. So we don't physically, day in, day out, it's that work.
No, and they're all seeing that at the other hospitals.
That's all from Dr. Peterson.
Yeah, good feedback. Uh, any other questions? If not, we'll move on to Chief Financial Officer, Scott.
Thank you. If you would turn to page forty six, the stat page. I'd like to start there and um. That um, the line two, um, patient days, four hundred and thirty-four patient days. That is indicative of how busy um ICU and that search were during this past month. That is, uh, that's a huge um. Variance in, in patient days. And uh, and as you drop down to, you can see the, the negative variances that. With uh inpatient surgery and outpatient surgery and G I procedures. And that was directly related to the decision to stop doing elective cases on the twentieth of September. Um, were we not to have done that, I don't know that we've really gotten by without that. That was absolutely. This organization, this community to do that. And we, they, like you can see just with these numbers alone that uh nursing has been really, really working hard. I don't know if he's, it, it's just, anyway, we've, we've, things have normal, gotten down to kind of a normal level right now. As we've started to do elective cases again this, this week. This was uh just, I think, just the collaboration that, that happened. It was. Excellent. And I think we served the community well by the decision that we made to do what we did. So these, the stats speak for themselves. Carrier or clinics were, were busy. They have been all year long. You see the, the positive year to date growth or year to date variance. And then more in. Two thousand twenty was a COVID year, so uh, but. So that's still very, very busy. So these stats just reflect uh. What was happening through, through the month. And then if we go over to page forty-eight, um, that is our. Statement of revenue and expenses. And um, so we lost, we lost about two weeks worth of elective surgery cases. But in spite of, we still had a positive revenue variance of two point three million dollars. Um, the. Revenue all in all looked really pretty good considering. Pretty good. Um, the expenses, the only truly unusual thing is on salaries. And um, the, the, in this case, a negative variance there. But we had a, as I mentioned, a, in the report, a, an accrual for the retention payment that we have. And we accrued that in the month of September. And so that's the reason for that large negative variance.
And just so I understand, why does it get accrued in the month of September? Is it just when the decision was made? And that goes on?
When the decision was made.
When, when the funds were obligated.
Okay.
So that, so that, that's the reason for that accrual that caused us to, um, with that additional expense. Um, that wasn't budgeted, it caused us to have a negative operating. Income for the, or operating loss for the, the month of about sixty-one thousand dollars. However, um, down in non-operating expense and revenue, we were able to accrue for one point two million dollars of. Provider relief funds. And one of the things that happened in the end of September is we completed. Uh, Jason and I worked together with our orders, D Z A, to do a uh. The provider relief funds report to Persa that, and we submitted data to uh. To D Z A who reviewed our data and then we completed this report. And so we, we are confident that the provider relief funds that we have received. We will now be able to keep all of those funds. And so we, we, there was some uncertainty uh, until that. All along, until whether or not we'd be able to keep it, but it became clear that we could keep that. And so we accrued one point two million dollars of, to offset that. And we ended up with a net income for the month of a million eighty thousand dollars. So that is, so all in all, a pretty good financial report for the month of September. Given that we stopped doing elective cases and had a very, very high COVID census. Any questions?
Um, I was gonna make a comment about back of page forty-six, line twenty, our adjusted patient days. When you adjust patient day, that's based upon uh, if I remember correctly, the, the, you know, the. Patients are more critical, it take more work, doesn't that increase our adjusted patient days?
That's case mix adjust, that's case suggested. Adjusted patient days takes your true inpatient days and it factors it up for your outpatient business. So it tries to create a combined denominator of all the work you do. By multiplying your inpatient days by out total revenue divided by inpatient. So the more and more outpatient we become, the larger the difference between adjusted patient days and inpatient days. But what you're thinking of as case mix adjusted. And that's the acuity that you apply just to your inpatients.
Okay, that I was just noticing, you know, we were up uh twenty-seven percent uh for the month of September. That was a pretty good pump.
Well, what you bring up a good point. If you move up to line eight on that page forty-six. You see a case mix index of one point two versus a budget of one. And that was, that case mix is an indicator of the acuity of the patients that A V H was carrying for in the month. Oh, it was, like I said, the ICU was very, very full and these, and we, we had very sick patients.
Yeah. So that kind of uh reinforces what the uh, the doctors have talked about and things like that. That uh, the pages, our, our hospitalists were really being pushed a lot. When you see the uh, the number. When you see the, uh, uh, the number pop up, because it shows that the, the patients were, uh, took more care. And not, not just providers, but even the staff, uh, ends up, uh, having a little bit more to do when that number pops up.
Our, our, our nursing and clinical staff were, were really working hard.
Yeah, on the case mix, prior year-to-date was one point zero one, which showed a more typical year. We didn't have the heavy ICU load because of the COVID. Is, is that, am I reading this correctly?
One point oh would be the average patient.
Yeah. So we were very close to average a year ago for the amount of work it took per patient.
Right. And then we were bulked up in September.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think, I got this, this is the value that you can, you can look at it and be able to measure the, uh, workload that it staff is, uh, having to deal with.
Um, one other comment on, uh, just on, uh, page, uh, it's not really on page forty-eight. But, um, you know, the one point two million dollars of provider relief funds that we were able to record in, in, um, in September. We also have completed an application for phase four provider relief funds. And that was due on the twenty-sixth of, uh, October. Don't know what that will yield for us, but we have, uh, completed, uh, we registered and completed that application. So there may be some additional, uh, provider relief funds that, uh.
It's because we still have costs set aside that have not yet been allocated to. And we, we've used up the funding and we still have leftover expenses we've not, uh.
That is, that is correct. And, and some of, some of the, the activity or lack of activity related to surgery that didn't happen in, um, September and October may be eligible for reimbursement from those provider relief funds. And then on just page forty-seven, on the, um, just the financial dashboard, it's, um, our, uh, our, uh, our days and accounts receivable, um, decreased to four days and continue a nice downward trend. And, uh, and this is, uh, this is because of, we have very, very good collection rates. And, uh, that, uh, that work that is going on, that is, uh, occurring and we're, we're doing. I, I actually happened to be, become aware of, uh, an account, uh, today that I was looking at. That, uh, the service occurred in February of two thousand twenty and we billed it timely. It, uh, there was, uh, insurance, um, initially denied it. It was rebuilt. And then they, they left the patient with, uh, they didn't pay anything. They left the patient with responsibility. Patient called and, uh, talked to us about that. And so we reached out to them and multiple times in working with the patient. We reached out to the insurance company and, and the dial team rebuilt it again. And after five hundred and seventy-seven days, the account was paid in full. And so this, uh, the, the folks in RevCycle, um, they work really hard to help our patients get these accounts paid. And thank heavens, not all of these accounts have to work as hard as this one. But I, I looked at, on the, I went through the correspondence with the, there were nine different individuals on a RevCycle alone that either worked with, uh, on, on the plane directly or took, spoke with the patient. Three individuals spoke with the patient at one time or another over this time period. But, um, um, the, the, they, they, they work incredibly hard to get these things paid. And I would, I was just, when I saw that, I thought, yes, they, some of, some of the, what payers actually expect you to give up. And they, they, they make things difficult and expect you to give up. But if you're persistent with them, you have a rep, you, you gain a reputation of being tough to deal with, not, you know, in a, in a positive way. And, um, or not.
Hey, Scott, uh, so one comment and then one question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think, I think all the board, someone's reached it. The staff have been just really happy with, and the timing of the retention bonus couldn't have been any better. But, I mean, just re, I think we've always received just overwhelming like gratitude for the timing of the retention bonus. And, um, and yeah, I think I, that just played out really, really well. Um, so my question is, when you look at the cares money and the purchase services and overtime, like, could, could we have captured, done more of the cares money at that time? What's the strategy on, like, doing more versus holding back some?
We're, with the overtime and the, uh, expenses related to, directly related to patient care, Medicare, those are factored into our cost report. So those are.
Oh, okay.
Those are exactly where, whereas the additional, the Julie spent eighty-five percent of her time or more in, on webinars. And, and Mandy Olson, almost a hundred percent of her time in two thousand twenty and, and many other ins, and her department and, um, Michelle's department. They, they were just, those are some of the dollars that we were, that, that we captured.
Yes, no, no, I, I get it now. I get what you're saying. Yeah. So, um, yep. Okay. Um, any other questions for Scott?
Well, I have a little bit, I don't have any other questions about the September financials, any? Okay, I do have.
I did a comment.
Yes, please.
On the, the, the income statement, we'll see we're, we're currently four million, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars over budget on expense. So just a heads up that next month we'll have a request for a budget amendment of twenty-twenty-one's budget for additional expense to be approved to get us through year end. Because we will exceed our twenty-twenty-one budget.
Yes, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
So that's, we've done that in the past. We did that last year. It's just a formality because you, as you pass a budget, it, it, you're allowing us to spend so much on expenses. And then with the additional revenue, we've exceeded that. So, um, if I could move on, just, uh, there wasn't too much related to grants other than the, uh, we actually received, uh, as Carrie noted, uh, that, that cash related to some of the Ames Grant that was awarded. In addition, and, and this will be recorded in October. And so we aren't, aren't expecting, just because of the elective cases that didn't happen in October for a good part of, up until the twenty-fifth, where the October revenue is going to come in pretty close to budget or maybe slightly below budget, where we've been running about two and a half to three million dollars ahead of budget on revenue. However, that, that hundred and sixty K will help with that. We also received about six hundred thousand dollar caravan, um, funds that will go to offset some of that, uh, revenue deficit. So that, so October is not looking quite as bleak as it otherwise initially would have for that reason. And then I have a, a couple of, uh, things related to capital. But the first thing I'd like to, and it's not directly related to capital, but it's the discussion Julie had about the, um, the, uh, the grant application for that, the daycare expansion and collaboration with Happy Feet. KVH is going to, as Julie's report noted, is going to, uh, commit to two hundred fifty thousand dollar matching, um, funds for this application. And I would, we likely, we, we can probably amortize this investment over the ten years of the obligation that contract we would have with Happy Feet that guarantees slots in, for KVH employees into this benefit. And it's, this is something similar that, um, happened in, in Yakima. When PNW, the medical school was being set up, um, Memorial, uh, made a, a million dollar, uh, investment in that seed money to get that program up and going. That, uh, and then the university, you know, initially, it, that, that money got the program with other U N members got that program up and going. So I think this investment that, uh, that KVH is contemplating is, uh, an investment that will help get, uh, adequate daycare up in, in this county. So that is, it's not a capital request, but it is a commitment that, uh, that, uh, we would like to make.
Is that something we need a vote, a vote on?
Um, I would like, yes, I would like a, a motion authorizing administration to participate in the bond application with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as matching funds. Open to do what you just said.
So, motion by Erica.
Second.
Second by Matt, by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Um, Bob, can we do a discussion round first?
Oh, you bet, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Like I mentioned to Scott, the, the two fifty, two hundred fifty K would give us kind of first priority for slots in this million point two five expansion. I also requested, if it was legal, that we get some slight discount off the potential rack rate, even if it's only a couple percent. I don't know if it's legal. I don't know if you're interested in that. But again, I feel we're taking money from the hospital to make this happen for a for-profit business. I feel like I would at least like to see a slight rack rate discount for KVH employees that use that facility in the future. That's just my comment and then I need to vote.
Yeah, and I also think, like, there's a lot more details that we need.
Right.
Right, that we just don't have now. Yeah.
Right, so we don't know if we're gonna get this grant or not. Um, so if we do get this grant, we're going to have to spend some time demonstrating the value back to the district of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Happy Feet and Melissa have already been very accommodating with regard to the right of first refusal. Um, we can continue the conversation with them.
Okay, so.
But there's all, the, in terms of gifting of funds, we're gonna have, uh, there's a lot of money.
Okay, you're way ahead of me then already, so.
Yeah.
First refusal is that in perpetuity? Yes, for the ten years.
But yeah, thanks, John. That, we definitely, yeah, wanted to get that in the minutes. Um, any other discussion? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Thank you.
Hey, and I have a, a couple of capital items, um, for the, uh, the board to consider. And the, the first one is informational. Um, uh, we, we just today, uh, I identified a ban that our environmental services, um, we, we've started to employ EBS staff as opposed to contract, having a contract. And they, they work in the hospital, they work at the Medical Arts Center, they work in various sites and they need, uh, the ability transport supplies and some of the heavier, heavy, uh, clean equipment to various sites. And so this was a, uh, uh, they identified this need and so we, that Morgan had founded a, a very, very nice used, um, Dodge van that we have purchased for about fifty-three thousand dollars. And it was within, um, Julie's authorization to do that. So we have executed that today and we have it sitting in that parking lot. And then the second capital item we have that was brought to the finance committee meeting, um, is, uh, our CT, we, we lease our CT and, uh, the lease of, of the CT is ending. And, uh, and we have the option, the option to purchase the CT. Uh, and so we would own it for a, a price of a hundred ninety-six thousand, almost a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. And, um, it is, it takes very, very good images. There is, it's going to likely, you, last for another five, six, seven, eight years. It would, um, it's a critical piece of equipment. And over, over time, it will actually, owning it is a, a less expensive option. We actually have the option to extend it also, but chose to purchase rather than extend it. So this is, we would like to, uh, like you to consider approving the purchase of the, uh.
And I'd like to add that, uh, as part of this expansion, we're looking to have two CT machines in the future. So this could become one of those at a pretty cost-effective price.
It'll be one of the two.
Yeah.
I was just curious, uh, what's our lease cost on that?
It was, I.
I don't remember.
I, I don't remember.
I know we discussed it.
I was thinking that, that based upon the lease and paying us out, we were going to be saving money. Because if we leased it for another five years, I bet you we'd.
Be a lot more than that.
We, we'd be paying a lot more than that. So consequently, by buying it outright, we're actually, uh, going to be saving money.
That, that did, that did come out in finance committee, that the, the numbers did pencil out. If we can get at least five years, hopefully ten, even further ahead.
I think it was three years too.
Once we hit three years, we're in the bonus territory, so. Yeah.
Does the lease cover maintenance?
It does not.
So we pay for that out of pocket?
We pay, we pay for the, uh, the ma, ongoing maintenance out of pocket right now. And we'll, we'll, we'll do so in the future. And a CT is a, a piece of equipment that you always want to have, a very good maintenance contracts. The tubes themselves are thirty thousand dollars apiece and we've replaced them not infrequently.
And the repair costs have been on us?
The repair costs have been on us already.
Okay.
Yes. I think it's a good thing to buy.
And a motion, Terry?
I know that we approved the purchase of the CT machine.
Motion by Terry. Second by.
I'll second.
Second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No opposed.
Thank you. And the next capital item is, uh, on page fifty, fifty-five. There is a, a schedule of, um, of our energy efficiency improvement project. And there is, uh, there's, this handout here is a proposal that, um, to do that, it's a detailed proposal, I didn't, um, this is the exact proposal. And so this, uh, we are talking about spending two million nine hundred and forty-three thousand, one, one hundred and fifty-one over a period of two thousand twenty, it started in two thousand twenty-one, occur in twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, and these, uh, these projects that are a part of this energy efficiency are nearly all at end of life. So their, their, their equipment, the, the ER and surgery fan walls and the boiler is all, um, fixed equipment that needs to be replaced anyway. And so this, um, this proposal will, will, uh, replace them with more efficient, um, equipment that complies and, and KVH will comply with the, uh, the state requirements to meet certain levels of, uh, energy efficiency over, um, and I think that is in, that we have to meet that requirement by two thousand twenty-seven. And, uh, so that, so the total purchase price is two million, two point nine million dollars. We have a half billion dollar Department of Commerce grant that will offset some of this, this cost that we can draw those funds when the work is completed. And we have another two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Sunderland Foundation of, uh, that we have received those funds already, but we have not recognized them because we have not done the work. So this is a, uh, the actual, um, contract that, that we would be asking, uh, giving Julie to sign is on page fifty-seven. It's a, um, a depart, it's a, an agreement with the Department of Enterprise Services with the state who is assisting us in this, uh, energy efficiency project. And the, um, the, uh, the, the cost for doing this is guaranteed as a part of the contract. And then the efficiency things that will occur are also in theory guaranteed. If the, the, if, if we don't see the savings that we occur, the, uh, apology is required to pay us back to, to, to get, to get the savings that they've guaranteed. So this, and Johnny, and.
Um, I would add a couple of things on the savings side. They're estimating, uh, you know, almost ninety thousand a year in savings. So over ten years, it'd be nine hundred thousand in, uh, energy savings. It's good for the environment, that's sort of like, the other thing we talked about is that sometimes if these, uh, fan units go down, they've had to cancel surgeries and whatnot because, uh, you know, you have to have the proper airflow and whatnot. And, uh, so we had good, long discussions about it. And, uh, so we had good, long discussions about it and I think we, by the end definitely felt very positive. That this equipment needs to be replaced and should be replaced anyway and it's, it meets the needs of the state. And the contract is with the state and, uh, with these grant monies, we're coming out of a little over two million dollars of our personal responsibility. For stuff that's gonna need to be done anyway, but we get the grant money, so Bob, any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I thought over ten years was like a one point five million dollar savings that they do guarantee. The first year, but the second we have to purchase and, yeah, the home run that John said was. A lot of stuff is end of life or past end of life.
So, so Bob, according to the chart, over fifteen years, uh, comes to essentially one point three million in savings or.
Okay.
Years, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and what, what additional factor that Ron had is it creates redundancy and, and, and we, we don't have that currently, um, when we, so.
So.
And we get, we get rid of all the fluorescent lights, which everybody hates fluorescent.
And I think they, uh, the labor to change out the lights going forward is minimized because LEDs last a lot longer than these fluorescent.
Yes.
That they're constantly having to go around and change, so. So all in all, we found the, uh, a very positive, uh, situation, so. So I would, I would move to approve this if you're looking for a motion, Bob.
Yep, motion by John.
I'll second it.
Second by Terry to, um. Commit to the energy efficiency program as outlined. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, and the only other thing that I had was on, um, um. Was just a, a, a kind of a summary on page sixty-five and page, um, sixty-six and this was just a, 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 a. It's very small, but the last column is a, shows the financial impact of, um. Of, of the PEB, like, the, the, the PEB journal entry that, or accounting entry that we would have to pay. We would move from, um, about a, uh. A, a seven point one million dollar net income to a, about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar net income. Because we would have to record that, that PEB liability, but it, it is as Julie and. It is a non-cash liability, so it doesn't come out of cash. So anyway, just, um, so I wanted you aware of that, we've talked about it before.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
That column is showing twenty twenty-one. Would, would we incur this penalty in twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay. And now penalty, although it feels like it, but yeah.
Take this, Dean.
Yes.
There's, there's no way they would come back and say, how, okay, uh, we're gonna reconcile, so. Um, we want that money now.
It has not, it, it has never happened, but it, I, there's, I guess, I would say there's.
No, there's, it, the, not under the pronouncement that's driving this, not under the.
Yeah.
Government accounting standards board pronouncement that's driving this entry.
And, and they couldn't just do it to us, could they? And they'd have to do it to everybody.
It'd have to happen to everybody.
So then.
Yeah.
Pretty big revolt.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then the last thing as Amanda, Amanda had mentioned is the, the left page, um. Sixty-six, I think it was. Was that, uh, that comparison of our Primera rates and that fifteen million dollar Primera cost versus PEB. And that kind of support for the, the decision to, to go with the.
Which would be cash out, like.
Which, which would be cash out, like.
The, the Primera choice.
Absolutely.
And, and they came back, cause they started at seventy-eight percent, they came back with fifty-five year one, twenty-five year two, and fifteen year three, so you know it's.
We had, we had actually asked if they would just spread that over three years.
And that was their.
And that was, they agreed that they could do that, but still almost, it's a hundred percent increase over three years.
Yeah.
Really challenging. And then the only other thing that I have right here is this, I passed this out, this is, um. Uh, this, uh, the finance committee had a, a financing discussion about, um. A potential, um, fifteen million dollar, um, debt financing to pay for the, uh, the surgery. Materials, central sterile and DI discussion, where it's being contemplated, um. We would need to make a decision probably by the next board meeting if we wanted to do that, but I, there is. Um, the interest rates right now are very, very, are historically low. Um, so from a rate perspective, it is, um, and, and. A good time to be, uh, borrowing funds, but there is, uh, anyway, there, there's discussion going on and, uh, um. Where, where about it? But not.
So, um, yeah, this, we spent a lot of time talking about this in finance, uh, committee and, um. We, we felt, the finance committee felt like we needed to meet again before our next finance committee. I, I'm, I'm open to having the whole board there calling a special board meeting to talk about it or. Or just have our committee meet, just look at options. Do we need to borrow? Can we use some of our investments? I don't know, any thoughts, John?
Uh, no, I mean, it's basically just what you said, there's a, we, we spent a lot of time on it and we felt we needed a significant more time to look at these potential paths. Uh, you, uh, we, we're waiting for some other stuff to come back, some, looking at some other capital expenses, looking at our resources, looking at our projections for our revenues. And using all these pieces to say, yes, we can borrow and it's a good rate, is it the smartest thing to borrow based on all these other things we have going? So, certainly everyone be welcome to attend that discussion. I kind of viewed it as just a secondary finance meeting, so we could get a logical plan together and then present it to the whole board. Along with, you know, there also was this other option, if you want to discuss it, we can explain why we didn't choose it. So it just depends, you know, with just a few of us there, it went on for like two hours and we had no end in sight, so. It's whatever people want to do, how much you want to know about it, you know, on that, it's just. The, the, the good thing is, it's all good news, it's, because we're financially stable, we have options. And we're just sifting through those options to make sure, you know, w- one example, when you look at this, my biggest issue was after paying on, uh. A fifteen point three million dollar loan for ten years, we'd still owe fourteen point two million. So, if, if that's my house, I'm a little anxious that we paid for ten years and only dropped the principal with one million dollars. So, that led me to say, I'd at least like to explore other options to make sure, for me, like, I know Julie loves to have the money in the bank, she's very conservative that way. But we have good cash flow and, uh, and other strategies we can explore. So that's why I thought an extra meeting would be very useful to, to not feel so rough.
If the rest, if the board is okay with me, John, and Julie and Scott. Just ru- run with it, but if, I just wanted to make sure the rest of the board would be. You know, invited to come if we, if you felt like you wanted to be that engaged.
I mean, I appreciate Bob, you, uh, inviting us here, I, I like John's idea at the meeting of, uh, at the next full board meeting. Of running us through like, here's why we didn't choose this option, here's why we didn't choose that option.
Okay.
So I, I'm.
Yep.
Comfortable with that, so, I like the idea.
Okay.
Uh, how do, how do you feel, Terry or Erica?
I'm comfortable with it too, I, I, uh, I think that you guys will work through the scenario and bring us the, uh, options.
And Erica?
That'd be much appreciated, that's a good idea.
Okay, so we'll, we'll plan presenting next in December, but we'll meet here hopefully in two weeks or so.
I'll get something on the calendar and.
Yeah.
Pull some data together.
Okay.
But, but one of the ticking clocks is, we don't know what the rates are gonna do, it's the, they need about three months if we're gonna move forward with these sort of bonds. So that's why we don't want a delay, we want to help figure it out. And one, present to all of you as a group, reach a consensus and then the, then they can move forward whatever we decide and, and hopefully the rates are still competitive.
On page eighteen and nineteen of this proposal, it kind of talks about a timeline and some of the steps that happen in it, that it's.
And, and the good, the good is, cause we would, by moving it to the December, uh, the first week of December for the final decision from us. This would shift one month if you look at page nineteen. But the good news is the rate locks in a month to six weeks before the, the bonds are issued, so. We'll still know what the rate is in, in, uh, late February, early March, so that we would know what we're.
And there is the option of actually locking in the rates and not actually pulling the funds down, never borrowing them, and the banks would just set them aside and then we.
We, we technically do an initial like half a million dollar draw to, to start it and then we waited a year or so before we took the next year. So we're not paying interest on more money that we don't need until the construction gets further along. But again, that's why we've got to have this separate discussion, because there's so much to cover.
Yep. Yeah, a- anything else, Scott?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Uh, Michelle?
I don't like following Scott. That a few times. Um, let's see, the only things I have to add, uh, we actually have, um, a candidate that has accepted our offer on the digital marketing side. Um, I don't know if she's got through all clearance yet, so I can't release her name, um, but we expect her to start November eighth, I'm really excited. Um, we'll be able to really kind of dig in, uh, both on website and hands, uh, enhancements. Web in general, Google Analytics, really kind of targeting our marketing on that, um, social media metrics, things like that. So I'm, I'm real excited to add that individual to our team. Um, just in, uh, I haven't had a chance to tell Julie this one yet, but CWU has canceled all, um, non-campus activity reservations through the month of January. So, um, and we were, it's just tentative on the employee, um, celebration, so I'll sit down with Julie and we'll kind of figure out what her plans are for that, but I wanted to let you know. And then I also just wanted to give you a heads up, um, for the November meeting, so in December, we should be getting a preliminary review of the updated community health needs assessment and improvement plan that KC H N is helping us with. Um, and so by, that needs to be reviewed and then subsequently adopted at our December meeting after input and suggestions and things like that.
So I had a question, when I saw that tentative, I know that was the question I had. So, is the idea that, uh, we should continue to lock out that date, you might find another place, or is the idea that you're gonna, uh, it's gonna be postponed? Yes, both.
I'm. I, I'm speaking without talking to my, my, my boss here.
So I'm just waiting to hear what.
I don't really, the, the concept and the number of people involved, I don't think, uh, we have an option B for a location. Um, I also don't know if we're in a position right now with COVID to be doing that, um.
We, we didn't expect where we are when we planned this for December, I, I don't think we want to have either first big foray.
Right.
Date.
Yeah, so in the back of my mind, what I'm thinking about is, is maybe, um, you know, hospital week is in, uh, May. So maybe that's the time, I, so, so we're gonna have to work that out, but I would say, no, you can release that date. Um, I'm sad to hear that, on the emergency preparedness side, um, just talking about that. All the conversations that they're starting to have now are, the declines that we were seeing are plateauing. So they're concerned, um, at that plateau, maybe the next incline for the six wave, they're saying waves.
So you're saying we've been coming down, but that coming down now is flattened and you would have expected to keep going down and, so there's something going on?
That, that's the concern, if it follows the trends that it has to.
How long has the plateau persisted at this point?
They're just starting to report it, do you know more?
No, just, I mean, it's de- dependent on someone on where you live and when they, they'll look at things at like the state level and. You know, it doesn't necessarily translate exactly to where we are, but just, um. Just talking with Dr. Larson yesterday, he's saying this every time, and I think Julie's mentioned this before, every time we have a new wave. We don't go back down to where we were before, and so it's looking like. We've done this wave and now this is gonna be the new normal as far as rates. And then when we hit the holiday season, we're gonna hit a new wave, which higher than before and we won't go back now.
We're gonna keep talking about it. Cause I'm gonna have to start bringing a fast. Man, I was, I, I.
Wrong picture.
Yeah, I saw hope on the horizon with, uh.
Well, there's always hope, we are, um, just today, we sent to the printer, uh. We pulled out our patient population, I think sixty and over, and we're sending out, um, just a postcard mailer with basically CDC information about booster eligibility and encouraging them not, you know. Contact their provider, contact their pharmacy, um, these are the people that are eligible, do it now before the holidays. Um, and then obviously, within the next week, we anticipate something with the Peds, uh, population and we'll have some reach out to our patients on that as well.
Can we have a, um, executive session just to yell curse words? Alright, well, maybe.
Well, uh, so, one thing that Dr. Martin would remind you of is compounding this. Um, is the length of stay we're seeing in these patients, I mean, it, we. Could be charging monthly rent at this point for some of these folks. Um, so that plateau, that new, we already have three patients, four patients in the critical care unit, um, when you. Have the holidays and anticipate a little bit of an uptick. It becomes the new normal.
Are you changing Facebook to its new name?
Is it really?
No. Now, what reading through, my understanding is it's the parent company that's.
Yeah, it's kind of what Google did with Alphabet.
Yeah.
But the ticker symbol's changing, so.
There you go. That's all.
Anything else, Michelle? Any questions for Michelle? Okay, so, uh, Terry has some, uh, bond levy education, I think he has it there. Yeah, if you have any questions for him or Carrie, Terry, you want to say, spend a couple minutes talking about it, um.
So, I, I watched two webinars that the Washington State Hospital Association did. One was on bond levies and one was on charity care. And if my name was Cliff, these would be Cliff Notes. Unfortunately, my name's Terry, so these are Terry Notes. So I just kind of put together some Cliff Notes for you, just to read through. Uh, if you're really interested in these, these webinars are recorded and you can go and, uh. Look at them, so you can read through my Terry Notes. And, uh, if you have anything, you could go and listen to the webinar. Uh, the, the other thing I just wanted to point out in the Terry Notes is on the last page of the bond. The Association of Washington Public Hospital Districts has a really interesting, uh. Site, uh, that has a bunch of, but tools, if we ever do go down and have to, uh. Are, are going to have some type of election for a bond or a levy or something like that, that to go through to it. But, uh, I just found these really interesting when I watched them and so I thought I'd put together some Terry Notes for you to, uh, to read through. And that's all I have unless there's a question.
Thanks for doing that, Terry.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. Um, any old business?
I'm gonna talk about the, uh, regional triage team just for a second, Bob.
Oh, yes, yeah, please.
Yeah, so, uh, the co-chairs of this, this is the regional triage team for Eastern Washington, the co-chairs, as you guys may remember. Are, uh, me and, and, uh, Dr. Martin and Pam Colmeyer, uh, from, uh, Gonzaga. Anyway, um, the exciting thing that's happened since our last meeting was, uh, we have new triage standards. We had been waiting, they were supposed to come out several months ago, many months ago. Uh, we were still working with the stuff from April two thousand twenty. But, uh, so there are new standards out there, they're available if anybody wants to see them. The main change was the sort of apparatus around it, they have, uh, they're supposed to have review committees and, and the communication strategy and all that stuff, so. Uh, we may have to put together another kind of committee, uh, we'll see. There are also a lot of new tiebreakers, including stuff that takes into account socioeconomic disadvantage. Anyway, it's kind of interesting. Um, but the big, uh, big uncertainty right now is how this is gonna be administered. We used to be administered by the Ready Coalition, which is the Regional Emergency and Designation Healthcare Coalition. Um, but, uh, we may go right under a DOH or something, I'm not sure exactly. We're also not sure about the organization, right now we cover everything east of the Cascades, but are we maybe gonna reorganize and, and just cover all of rural throughout the. Throughout the states, uh, how is that gonna be? There's all this question of who, uh, declares crisis standards of care. Can individual districts do it and does the state have to do it? The state's position is when you start doing things that are crisis standards of care, like we'll think about declaring it. Um, anyway, there's a lot of question about that. So we're kind of in, uh, even though the new standards came out, which was good because we've been in limbo for many months over that. There's a lot of reorganization going on and we're not sure where that's going. So, uh, we're, we've kind of, we're put on hold for a little bit. That's where we are. Anyway, that's just a little update. And Dr. Martin would probably have things to add to that, but since he's not here, he'll just have to take what I.
Yeah, thanks for that update, Matt.
Thank you.
Uh, so other old business, we have board evaluation. Uh, in December second meeting, we'll discuss that. And then also talking with Julie, we're gonna do the CEO evaluation similar to what we did last year. So we'll get moving with that. Um, new business, um, board officers, so. Um, been approached by several folks as far as positions. Um, the slate I would propose, and we could have, definitely have some discussion, is Erica as the, as the chair, Matt as the vice, vice chair, and Terry as a secretary. I'll move off, off of that completely. That'll put John in a line for next year. Any discussions, any opinions? I think this would, this would not go into effect until January.
Well, I mean, I have, I have some thoughts. So I have, I have two years left in my term and, uh, have not had a chance to have one of those leadership roles. So these have been for two-year terms so far, according to what you guys explained to during this discussion a year ago.
Yeah.
In theory, um, you know, uh, I, I don't really care for this as a solution, both Erica and Matt that have, have had opportunities of these leadership roles, even though it's proclaimed to me that they're not important, so you shouldn't care. Um, so I just, I'd like an opportunity before I'm, you know, voted out to, to have a, a, an opportunity to experience one of those roles. So that's my short statement. I'm happy to, to share more, but I think everyone should think.
Okay.
Talk if they're interested, so.
Yeah, we are, I am proposing moving committees around also, so.
I know, I'm talking about right now, I'm, I'm responding to your statement, so.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments?
I mean, yeah, it is, it is difficult to, I guess I hadn't realized until you told me when you were elected that you were in this, uh.
Cause I'm filling a term, so I have a shorter term than a normal six-year term, so.
Yeah, well, the, I mean, I don't have any concerns about you not being reelected. And I'm sure that, uh, if you were to do that.
You know that a couple of times I've run, you've written letters against me, so it's kind of ironic.
I did the, uh, first or this last time, because I liked, I thought Roy Savoy was a good member of the board. But, uh, I mean, I think you've done a good job. I don't see what anybody would be.
But we, we can't predict the future. I mean,
Well, that's true.
We don't even know that Eric is gonna be.
Yeah.
Here three, four weeks from now. You just don't know.
Well, that's true. And then that will sort of shake things up, certainly.
Yeah, that would be awkward.
I think, uh, but, uh, I mean, that's the idea, like, um, when I had gotten on the board, I was on the board originally for a while and then Pam. I mean, I wasn't in a, um, leadership position until Pam left and then I was sort of installed here. It seems like traditionally we've done this thing where you, you go in, you're a secretary, you're in for two years and you're vice president two years and then president for two years. And, uh, that's what we've been doing. I think traditionally that's worked. I, I'm not sure that I could think of a real good reason to go off of that note. I mean, I think if you want to put your name in, uh, I mean, we can have a contested election, um, uh, for board positions, you know? So if you'd like to put your name in, I, I mean, I would say probably a sec for secretary, but if you want to put it in for a different position, I think that'd be fine. We can have contested elections. But I think the way we've done it traditionally has seemed to work out. You know, you, you sort of get into the position, you figure out the more, uh, experience you have and you, you sort of move up in the, in the chain and then, and then you move on. But anyway, that's just been my experience.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I don't think, cause I went up for reelection pretty quick. I don't think it comes up. I honestly don't think it comes up. I think what, what matters is more the, the committees are on the influence on the committees. But no, I mean, we did, we did a motion to make any movement.
Bob, this is the second year in a row you said it doesn't matter, but you've not given me an opportunity to serve in one of those quasi-leadership roles. And that's.
Yeah.
You can't have it both ways. You can't say it doesn't matter, but you guys have been elected the longest, want to take all those slots.
Yep, but I can also say that each of those individually approached me about those positions.
I approached you last year. I mean, I, I, I made it clear last year how I thought, you said, well, let's wait until this year. Cause you want to finish your second year as the board president.
Yeah.
So, uh, again, I, I, I didn't see need to overtalk it. We discussed it a year ago and you said there'd be opportunities this year. Just be patient. And again, I'm down to two years before, you know, I, I potentially run again. And so this is my window to, to be involved at this level. I mean, maybe let's look at how many years you guys have spent in these leadership positions. You know, so I've been a board member for two years, one year in twenty fifteen, two years now.
Well, that, I mean.
The rest of you been, been in these leadership positions and Terry hasn't been in any yet.
I mean, if we go back to, uh, Joan Glover was, was board president for eight years straight, I think. I mean, she was, you know, so there, yeah, there's, there's no precedence. Uh, the purpose of setting up how we did is to build leadership, right? So to feel like with time, we're gonna grow in that position and just continue to build leadership from within.
But, but at the same time, a year ago, you said these are essentially just titles. There's not much to do.
Yep.
This is like the company, you're, you're talking.
You're right.
Times and that, you know, and, and I don't like that, so I'm just.
Yeah.
You asked for discussion, so again, I'm saying I'd like to have an opportunity to, to represent one of those roles. I put it out there. There's four of you. All you have to say is no, and there's nothing else I can do.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a vote, so.
I don't like that these quasi-negotiations took place off-camera, if you will. I didn't realize you wanted somebody to come to you and say, you didn't, you never said, come to me if you want to, you know, one of these roles. We spoke of it last year and you said when this comes around this year, that'll be my opportunity. So I felt that was enough of a discussion.
Yeah.
So for me, again, it's just the principle of things. It's not that big of a deal. It's just the principle of thing. I live by really simple rules. And, and again, you know, I've been involved with this hospital, uh, on, on two different times here. And I'm just saying, I have two years left in my term. There's no guarantees what's gonna happen. And, um, so I'm just looking for an opportunity to, uh, contribute. And I've said enough.
So you feel like having one of these positions will, will determine if you're gonna get elected or not?
I do not know. Uh, uh, again, it's, it's such a trap to where the move these people are, both, uh, when you register and when you vote. If you can tell me what's going on in May of that year and, you know, Oc- October of that year, I can tell you how it's gonna go. But people tend to latch up and you're, I, I'm the only one running during that cycle. So if there's any anger towards the hospital, it's all gonna fall on me.
Yeah, good point. Good point.
And the question, uh, facing us right now though is, is, it seems to me like the way we've been doing it, when you started as secretary, you go two years, go up to VP for two years, you go to president for two years, it's been working. And the question is whether working around your sort of election date is, is reason enough to change that. And I just don't think so. That's just my personal opinion.
A- as a contrast though, there's a certain lack of logic to what you're saying. Because you're, you're picking Terry to slide in the secretary spot, even though I have a year more experience.
Well, no one picked Terry. We haven't.
Well, you, you just listed the names off.
Well, Terry approached Bob, said that he was interested in it. We haven't even voted on it.
So if you, i- if you wanted to be approached, it should have been made clear at some point, approach me if you want to have another discussion about this situation. So.
You can, I mean, you can put in, we can nominate anybody right now. If you'd like to nominate yourself for secretary, I think, or any other position. I don't think it's a problem.
So I'll, I'll nominate myself to be president of the board for the next two years then. How's that?
Sure.
Okay.
Now for a public vote, this is really gonna hurt.
Yeah.
We can't do pieces of paper and slide them over.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
No.
So i- if that's your motion, right, is that what you want, John?
Uh, how, however the procedure is, you, you asked for me to voice something, so I'm voicing something. And so you tell me how you want to handle it.
Uh, just like anything else, we have to have a motion and we have to have a second.
We need the balance of the slate.
What's, what does that mean?
So we have John on this slate as the president of the board. Who would be the vice president and who would be the secretary?
Oh, so we vote on one slate or the other slate or versions of the slate. Either that or you're voting for positions independently.
Yeah, I think if, if this is going on, we vote on the position independently.
Alright, okay, that makes sense.
Right, so we have a motion on the table, right, for John as president. Do we, is there a second?
Is the idea that you made the motion for the other three?
No, that was just me presenting. I can't, I'm not, as a president, I don't make motions.
So do we have to make a motion for the other people?
Yeah.
Do them one at a time, yeah.
Okay, I guess I move to, uh, nominate Erica as president?
Well, we do the first motion first.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So.
So you want to see if we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'll second it, uh, for John to run for president. I don't have a problem with that. Did you hear me, Bob?
Yeah, so motion by John to nominate himself. Uh, second by Matt. Right, all in favor, say.
What are we, what are we voting for? Just that he gets nominated?
No, this is for president.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that Erica be nominated for president.
So, so how?
Cause we can nominate more than one, one person to run.
So if there's a motion for John, if there's no second, it doesn't go forward.
Okay, well, I withdraw my second, but I thought that we could just put up two people for a thing, can't we?
So we can both be nominated and vote on that, so.
I think it's, I, personally, I thought it was one at a time. Correct me if I'm wrong.
But then what do we vote on if it's one at a time?
Eh, eith- either the motion goes through, you have a second and then you vote, or if there's no second, there's no vote.
Is that how it works for elections?
I don't know. We haven't had this. What do we, what do we do, you know?
Well, I, I hear, I hear you two saying you want two votes, you want two candidates for president.
Yeah.
That seems reasonable.
Alright, so then the motion would be that both John and Erica be nominated for the president's position beginning of January twenty twenty-two. You would need a motion and a second.
Alright.
And then we vote that we're both nominees?
Yes, we're both nominees and then you can vote between for John and vote for Eric.
Okay, so giving a yay vote to this is not voting for one or the other. It's saying that we both move forward.
This is, let's, the record reflect, this is a motion to nominate John Ward and Erica Leveno.
Okay.
Well, in that case, I guess what I want to do is withdraw my second and instead make a motion. Although, but I guess I can't do that. We have to wait for it to see if there's a second then, right? I don't know what that was.
Yeah, either you, yeah, you can make, we have a motion on the table, so do we have a second?
Which motion is on the table?
John as president.
Okay.
To nominate John.
To nominate John as president.
Not to vote for John as president.
Can we just repeat this and nominate me too, to save time?
Yes, you may, may.
Alright, well, I mean, is it totally awkward if I want myself to win, but I can second the nomination to move us forward? Can we do that?
Yes.
Alright, I second that nomination.
So Erica's second thing, John as a nominee.
Yes.
So John moved to put himself on the, to nominate himself. Erica seconded John to nominate, to the nomination. Now, what I heard you saying is that you need a second motion to nominate Erica.
Yeah, I'll move to nominate Erica.
Who was the first to nominate Erica? Erica was?
No, no, we've got.
Matt was, okay.
Now you need a second to nominate Erica.
Can I second myself? Okay, I'm gonna second that.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Go to this one first or do you want to go to the other ones too?
Let's get this one.
Alright.
Okay, so then.
So Bob, you need a vote, uh, unless there's a third nominee for president. Anyone else wanna?
Well, I'd love to be president someday, but I don't want to get the board in a hashtag mess up here. So I'm being quiet over here, except now my lips are moving and I'm not being quiet.
Okay, so again, I'm trying to make sure that the record is going to reflect what the board's trying to achieve. We have two nominees for president of the board beginning in January twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, John is one of those nominees that was moved by John and seconded by Erica for him to be nominated. Erica is the other nominee for president. It was moved by Matt and seconded by Erica for her to be president going forward. I believe you are prepared for a show of hands, who wants John and a show of hands, who wants Eric?
Yes.
There's no third candidate, it sounds like.
Okay. So all in favor of John as president? Okay, we have one vote. Let the record show, we have one vote. All in favor of have, of Erica as president. So.
Are you abstaining, Terry?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So let's record show, three votes uh, for Erica, one uh, and one abstention from Erica.
That's right, I think that's good.
Some abstention from either of them. Yeah, I have a staying for both votes.
Okay. So.
So Bob, unless you're looking to break a tie, typically you wouldn't vote. So my accounting says that there were two votes for Erica and one abstention and one vote for John. And one abstention.
Yeah. Okay, next position?
What's?
Vice president?
You have a nomination for vice president?
They have nominated for vice president.
Okay, do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second my own nomination.
So we have motion by Erica, second by Matt for vice president of the board.
Are, are there any other nominations since we've gone this route now for vice president?
All in favor? Raise your hand.
We have two votes. Terry, are you abstaining?
Oh.
Three votes for Erica.
It really doesn't matter. There were three votes.
Matt, I'm sorry, three votes for Matt. I don't want to do.
John, are you abstaining?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And now we have vote for secretary?
Need to nominate someone.
I nominate, uh, Terry.
Do you have a second?
I'll second Terry.
Motion by Matt, second by Erica. Any other nominations? All in favor, raise your hand?
And John, are you abstaining?
Yes.
So four votes for Terry and one. So four votes for Terry and one abstention. Abstaining.
The officers for 2022 will be Erica as president, Matt as vice president and, and Terry as secretary.
Has everybody had a chance, Bob?
Yeah.
Uh, we're, uh, do we approve, I mean, has everyone had a chance to look at the committee assignments? Are people happy with these? Not sure what sort of input, I mean, I.
So on Monday, I met the, I believe it was Terry and Erica, John and Matt and Bob. In two twos and one one. I just want to make it clear that there was not a forum at any of these meetings. And this list of committees, and there are five committees that do routine work and, and meet routinely. Quality improvement, finance, med exec, compliance, patient family advisory, and then the liaison representative to the foundation. I apologize, there's six. Um, the others are ad hoc assignments, provider values alignment, CEO evaluation, and the joint district meeting. Um, I believe all of you had an opportunity to voice sort of your interest in the various committees. And that's what I tried to reflect, particularly on the top six. I will say I've left a little bit confused. So hopefully this reflects the conversation.
So the big changes were. I move off MSC, then as the chair, Eric would be on MSC. Terry moving to. Joint District Committee. Are you okay with that, Terry?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then John being second with Erica on the PFAC. Are you okay with that?
Yep, yeah.
Okay. And then I'll move from the MSC to the foundation. Any discussion on committees?
It is there. So it sounds like some of these committees, anyway, could have more than one person. Right, so like the foundation, who, is it just you, Bob? And foundation, or you and Terry?
We have alternates, so. In the past, alternates have come to some meetings and don't go to other meetings. I think there's some meetings, like finances, a meeting, I think it's important to have two board members there.
The PFAC only meets quarterly. Is there any reason why we couldn't have two on there?
Um, I could just speak up briefly about that. So one of the things we want to make sure with the patient family advisory committee is that there are more patients than there are KVH board members or staff. So we actually try to limit the KVH side of it somewhat. So that's why it's kind of been, you know, one with an alternate and not two. Because like I asked for tonight, we, we need, they're kind of hard to get the patient family advisors. And so we want to not overwhelm them with, with our numbers.
I mean, I haven't talked to Erica about this, but. I mean, John, I don't know if you're interested in that. That's one way of talking to patients and hearing their concerns and, and. It's one way of touching the community. Would you have any interest in becoming the member as opposed to the alternate?
No.
Okay.
So this does have each board member serving up to.
All right. But I'm fine with it.
Yeah. If there's. People get thinking about it when, you know, we, there's room for some discussion, so. But I think it's a good, good to change things around.
When there's somebody listed as an alternate and there's two board members assigned to a committee, if just one of those board members isn't able to attend, is that alternate then? Or is it only if both can't attend, then the alternate steps in?
Right, so finance, there's an occasion where Bob can't attend or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
And like compliance, John goes to compliance, but I, I don't really attend that unless John's gonna say, I can't make it.
So like for QI council, the only time I'd ever go is if Matt and Terry both couldn't go, but. Well, taken.
Yeah.
Andy, you typically look for this to be adopted by a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
To move, cause if so, I'll move to adopt the 2022 committees and meetings assignments for board commissioners.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board calendar? So if we can look at that. I talked to Julie about February, the AHA is gonna be live. And open it up for.
At everybody's spot.
Okay.
The rural conference in Phoenix.
So to open it up, so if the whole board wanted to go, cause that is a good meeting and they haven't. Has it been two, two years almost? It has been two years.
Yeah.
It's a good meeting. I'm, I'm not sure if I'll be able to get away for, since it's not over a week. Yeah, I'm not sure about. If I can do that.
How long do we have to decide on that?
Andy? I can always reserve rooms next week and then if you can let me know, maybe in the next week or two. Except by three, get the fourth three, but I'd like to wait to register till I know everybody's.
I'll probably have to bow out of that one myself. I won't normally settle in time.
Yeah, I don't think I can. Take the whole week off of class.
But I have been flying places sometimes and it's gone okay. I was living to tell about it, so I'm a little more comfortable with this.
This is a, a kind of the premier rural conference. There's the one in Phoenix in February and there's one in San Diego in July. This has a lot more meat on the bones. They have really good speakers here. It's not unusual for entire boards to use this as, you know, kind of their getaway, so.
Yeah, I went a couple of years ago, a few years ago. It's a really good meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
And Bob, you want to attend, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I want to go.
Did I hear yes from Terry?
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
And John, you're, you'll be back to me? Okay.
Register is now, it's a discount.
Any other new business?
You have the CEO annual evaluation on here.
Yeah, so we're. We're gonna do the same approach as what we did last year to. Survey, then talk with senior leadership.
Yeah, if they show up. Sit on the ground.
Is the board okay with that versus?
I appreciate it. And then also the partners, hospital district to the foundation.
Yeah.
And if you could include KCHN this year as well.
Okay.
Sorry, foundation, KCHN, most hospital districts.
Okay. And anything else? So, and we, we do have no executive session.
No executive session. It was on the agenda in case there were any medical staff.
Great, thanks, everybody.